She is our director of materials management, face Morgan Anderson.
Single, lots of expensive person.
She's basically just my in our financials statement on supplies and buying this seventeen employee. In the H, she was a buyer responsible for buying a lot of us here. And she was, it was a great collaborator. She worked very, very closely with any front step when we set up new, when we brought on Vascular T. You didn't hear anything, she doesn't listen to you, absolutely silence. And she was representative for Teamsters, our unit, and did a good job representing Teamsters, but also operated well with the hospital and that. So I just, when the position came open, I, she was the first person.
Congratulations on your position. Do you have anything you'd like to not put you on the spot, but anything you'd like to say?
No, I'm just excited to continue as the organization and the capacity and continue to support our growing organization. Just excited to be, thank you Scott.
Hopefully this expansion project will give you a little bit more space a year from now.
Yeah, we need the extra room.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
It's, I know that everybody's really happy when there's internal candidates, someone who's worked here for so long and paid their dues here and worked their way up. So we're really pleased that you're taking on this new position.
Great, thank you. I've been very well supported, so I just appreciate it.
Good to see you, Mike. Thank you. Anything else, Scott?
I do not have anything else.
All right. So we have the two thousand twenty-three compliance work plan, Cindy Kelly.
So every year we develop a new work plan for the compliance program and it's built on these seven elements that are included here. The work plan this year is almost exactly like last year's. There's two new things. First of all, the com- in the previous years, we've looked at compliance policies and procedures. This year, we're looking at all KPH policies and procedures, reviewing them to be sure that they meet regulations as far as when they're updated and renewed and things like that. And to do that, we're in the process of selecting a good application what we've been using has, is no longer working well for us. So we're going to select a new application. We found one that's going to do, it's going to be really nice to work with. So that's the first change. The next change. What I'm looking for is contracts. There we go. Go back. Contract commitments, okay. Making sure that contract commitments are delivered and regulatory compliance. So again, the software that we're looking at will also help us to manage contracts. And that's something we need to get very, much better organized so that we can find everything when we need it and we can ensure that's being reviewed as it should be, that it meets certain qualifications or certain criteria when we approve them. Also, some of our contracts have to have a business associate agreement and so we want to assure that all that's happening. And again, the same application laws and processes. Other than that, this is the same work plan that we used last year. So we're looking to see that the board approves this so that we can move forward. We're working to it already. That's pretty much it. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions?
Cindy, was it in the packet here? I didn't see this packet.
Okay, well, I apologize. I thought it was in the packet, so I didn't, I assumed you guys had already looked at.
It was my understanding that it was a presentation and so I, it was my mistake.
I'm learning. I'm learning the right words to, to give you what I'm intending to do.
Yes, my apologies.
So. Any questions or would you like me to go over it more carefully?
Uh, well, let me ask.
Sorry, I thought this was an introduction. Are we voting on this?
Yes.
I can't vote without reading the question.
Okay.
So is there, what's the timing on this? We waited to actually do the formal votes until next month?
They're already working. Yes, so the sequence historically has been in February or March, the compliance officer gives the report on previous year and then you adopt the current year. So the transition between Linda and this is the official transition. Cindy, I'm asking for the adoption of this year's plan. But this is already the work that compliance is doing, so I don't have a problem.
Would you mind just emailing to the board office?
Sure.
Yeah. And we'll be happy to look at it and then, then Mandy just, assume we put this under quality.
No, it's actually directly to you.
All right, so we can just put it as a separate line item.
Yeah, we can do a presentation. We have to come back to that.
I think, I mean, I suppose that'll give us a chance to ask you questions, but how about this? Because you were so nice to come here tonight. How about we just, when we get by email, look it over and if you have questions about it, email her and hopefully we can clear up my questions. If anybody would like her to come next month, we'll be happy to invite you, but I think we should be able to handle it by email.
Okay. Is there anything that you would like us to know as prior to receiving email? Certain things you'd like us to know?
The main things I pointed out are policies and procedures and contract management because that is new on this program. Other than that, I think it's pretty self-explanatory as you go through, but it might not be to you and you read it, so I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, we appreciate you coming here and thank you for sort of teeing it up. We'll be sure to review it before the next meeting and we'll vote on it then.
Sounds great. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up, we have Visions, Bill Manowitz and Marcus Jaffe. Thank you guys for coming.
Thanks for having us back. It's been a while. I was looking at my files and I think it was two thousand nineteen when I was here last. So we had a couple of things happen between now and then called a pandemic. But no, we're glad to be here, so thanks and nice to meet you, Mr. Ward. I think, I think you're the only new face to me, so. Anyway, I am the director of operations. Of course, Marcus is your director of rehabilitation right here on site. And so it was funny, we had a staff meeting today with, of course, our staff and we were talking about presenting the board sign and they're like, ooh, ow, ooh, I hope that goes okay. We're like, hey, it's our opportunity to brag to our staff, so we're happy to be here, happy to be here.
We are happy to be here, yeah.
Okay. All right, so we'll start with our patient satisfaction scores. Of course, our goal is to be above seventy-five percent. And is that goal set here or is that, I mean, that's.
Yes.
That's, that's our goal, so.
It's consistent with all of our other patient satisfactions.
Perfect. All right, so we are, we're cruising right along. Eighty percent, eighty-two percent, eighty-one percent, eighty-one percent. Of course, this year is just the first quarter number, so we're pretty excited about that. Put a couple of comments on here, just, you know, because there's always the written comments that are on there. I just wanted to kind of see what some of the people are writing, but they always speak highly of our clinicians. We feel like our patient engagement is stellar. When we get them in the door, they, they tend to love the people they're working with. But it's not, that's not too uncommon in a rehabilitation department because you do build these relationships with your, with your patients for sure.
Can I ask a question about point four?
Absolutely, yeah.
Is that, uh, the client made amazing progress, is that a comment to their comment or is that a provider who submitted that?
That's a good question.
That is a great question.
Yeah, so, so these come in as they are written, like into the press gaming system.
So maybe they were speaking in third person, which means they're solving.
Well, actually, I think I did that because it was patient.
Took the name out.
I took the name of work.
Gotcha, okay.
So I, it was probably a family member commenting on somebody asking.
That makes sense.
And so I took the patient's name out and I put client because, well, you're trying to be hip hop.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's great.
Right, so, yeah. And so I, I did that a couple times. So, awesome. Any other questions on that? Um, our metrics, all right, so probably our biggest thing that's affecting us, and we'll touch on this a little bit later as well, is our cancellation and no-show rate. So again, we'll talk about it a little bit later. Our goal is to be well below fifteen percent, but right now we're cruising around sixteen point two percent. And which, which is definitely hurting some of our metrics. Go ahead.
Cancellation, what, what threshold is that to be counted on? Does this work in a certain proximity of time to a certain time?
Absolutely, yeah, it's a great question.
A week prior wouldn't be counted here?
That is correct. We count cancellations on the day of.
Oh.
So, I mean, this is a daily total. What we do is we count, and it really turns out to be missed opportunities to see a patient. And so like if we have somebody on our schedule that just doesn't show up, that obviously hits our no-show count. Our cancellations, we give our administrative assistants the opportunity to really help us with this number. And so if somebody wants to call in in the morning and cancel at two P M. And we're able to fill that with somebody else that's, that's waiting in the wings, then we don't count that as a missed opportunity. Granted, it does go on the patient's cancellation record, but as far as this statistic, this is missed opportunities. And so, and this is, this is kind of huge and we'll, again, we'll talk about it a little bit later. But just to give you, Medicare, just when we're looking at the other clinics in the area and what's happening, Medicaid has been a, has really been on the rise here in our outpatient practice, we've noticed. And that's because a lot of the other practices in town have quit accepting Medicaid. And so as our Medicaid population increases, that has, that does tend to drive up your no-show cancellation rate. We've seen that in several studies across the board. But, so that is kind of a downside. We are working on bringing that down. One of the things that we are doing is we're implementing a new practice of removing from the schedule anybody that no-shows twice. So if you no-show twice, obviously on the first one, you're going to get a call from your clinician and she just says, hey, we understand you missed today's appointment, you know, what's going on? How are you doing? We want to get you in here. We want to take care of you. But, you know, at that point in time, we kind of make a schedule on a one-off basis rather than scheduling multiple appointments at the same time. Yes.
So if someone is a no-show, but you fill in with somebody on a waiting list or something, is it still considered a no-show?
Well, so, yeah.
Maybe you don't fill it.
No-shows are, happened at the time, so it's, it's really impossible for us to fill somebody else in there because we don't even know they didn't show up for their appointment until ten minutes after their appointment and, and we're still waiting.
I, I usually, where cancellations like Eric had asked earlier, so they canceled that morning.
Yes.
And four hours later, you've got a slot. Does it get filled or tend to not get filled once it's canceled day of?
It, so it depends on what time of day. So if, four hours is pretty tight for patients, but if someone calls and cancels in the morning and it's.
Snap.
If they cancel in the morning for an afternoon appointment, then we can frequently fill that. What I found working in different clinics on the west side of the mountains and on this side, you actually have a pretty robust cancellation list in order to fill up because you're going to call lots of folks, lots of people will, will be busy. And that's fair, like, you know, they're, they're busy or they have something else going on, they have another appointment. So typically, I mean, if they, if we have enough time, we will get it filled. And that's sort of the challenge with this no-show cancellation policy is that what we're defining as a no-show is people who actually just do not show up at all. Because then you have a lot of conversation about what counts as a cancellation, what doesn't count as a cancellation.
For our cancellation patients, I mean, the people who are actually calling and letting us know that they're not going to come in, we really try and work with them and work with their schedules so we can meet their needs as much as, you know, filling our schedule. There's obviously time slots that are super popular, you know, I mean, it's like the beginning of the day, the end of the day, hey, when I do this around my lunch hour, I mean, those, it's the ten A M. that nobody wants except for the retired person that really doesn't want to get up that early anyway. And so those are, those are the harder times to fill up in. I will tell you that our administrative assistants are absolutely engaged in trying to help us drive this number down and, and our clinicians are engaged in trying to make sure that the communication exists. You know, we've also done things, we do, we do MedBridge and MedBridge has, of course, we've tried to, you know, we've had our clinicians take, develop and build the therapeutic alliance. And what the therapeutic alliance is, is to help the patient understand how important it is that they actually show up for their. And so trying to build that accountability with the patient. I mean, it's, it's things that we're working on in this location, but frankly, it's throughout the entire, and throughout our entire company, we've seen cancellations and no-shows rise. We feel a lot of it has to do with the pandemic and people just getting in the habit of not necessarily coming to where they need to be.
So you have my classes?
Yeah, probably, yes, probably, yes. Accessibility, this is, this is one thing that is, you know, continually a struggle. We feel like we have eighty-six to ninety percent accessibility in the second quarter. Second quarter?
We're entering the second quarter.
We're entering the second quarter.
Yeah.
It would have been first quarter numbers. I apologize for the typo. In June, we are implementing a new schedule and that should significantly impact our accessibility to our, to the community. Because we recognize we've got to do something to get more people in the door. Clinicians, as you well know, are very passionate about how they treat and how they want to work with people. We're going to a thirty-minute schedule, which will open up the number of appointment slots during the day and will also decrease the effect of having a no-show or cancellation. Because our clinicians will be able to spend more time with the patient if the next patient doesn't show up, but at the same time, we'll be able to get patients in. The other thing that this allows for is it allows for a scheduled evaluation time throughout the day. Avals will be still an hour long to give our clinicians sufficient time to, to see the patient and get that patient engagement going. But ideally, those that will stay in appointment, an evaluation appointment, and so there will always be places for evaluations to come in. And adjusting the plan of care will be needed on the clinicians and to, to counteract the ebb and flow of those incoming patients. So really hoping to kind of expand that a little bit more, increase our accessibility greater than the eighty-six to ninety percent. On average, our evaluations are completed in twenty-one days. We do see that that is not where we really want to be, that's not where we want to hang out. But it's also, that, that is where the other clinics are in town as well. But we're working on that one and we hope to change in our schedule. We had to move it out to June just because we're scheduled that far out, you know, and we need to, this is a reset of the schedule, so. And I think you presented that and wanted to implement that starting, I mean, you talked to me first in February.
Yeah, I was like, let's do it.
Saying, let's, let's get this thing going. So we're making a major shift in the way the schedule is, so. Implement an increase, and our productivity is currently at sixty-five percent. You know, we feel like part of the, part of the effect of that, part of the reason it's at sixty-five percent is because of the cancellation no-show rate that, that dings us pretty hard. And, you know, it's just not productive time for our patient, for our clinicians. But we expect that number to go up as we make these other changes. Any questions on our metrics? We have some graphs to go through as well. Yeah?
On the page before this, all those low eighty numbers seem very, very consistent. What do you trace that differential to since it's so consistent? The difference between eighty-one and a hundred percent, what, what is that eighteen percent not liking or not approving of? Do you have any sense of that?
Sure, Marcus, I'll let you, I mean, here's, ooh, big one.
Yeah, no, that, so flag for over this because obviously, and actually, if you were to come into one of my staff meetings, because everyone's invited to my staff meetings, if you want to come get some great food and meet my staff.
We do.
We have daily bread sandwiches.
We have daily bread sandwiches today. But so I start off with press gaming scores, because I always tell them the most important thing, at the end of the day, we can look at the graphs or anything, but how does the patient feel when they leave? Do they feel that they were valued, heard, they received good treatment that was meaningful and valuable to them? And we see that through these metrics here. So we are meeting that seventy-five percent, which is good, but then like, how do we get better? We don't want to just say, you know, first base. So when I look at, because it, because it breaks it down, you know, into like the different metrics into like this, and what I find mostly, because most people are, we, we score pretty high on and usually it's, it's how quickly people get it, because once they're into our clinic, they are very happy. Just like a lot of, like any of you guys, if you have an appointment, you want to be seen by your physician right away. And this, and that's why we're making that, that change to try and get people in quicker. And not only does it get people in quicker, but then we have more follow-ups for them to come into. So in June, hopefully that helps with that, with that differential. We're probably not going to get to a hundred percent because unfortunately, that maybe hundred percent, maybe.
I'm dealing with humans.
Yeah, yeah, we're dealing with humans, but five, six, seven, if we can get to ninety, I would just be dumping, dumping for joy.
That's the top box percentage, right? So it's people who give a nine or a ten. So probably the twenty-five percent is hanging around at a eight. It's not like they're, they gave zero or two.
Okay.
And you can see that distribution when you look in.
So it's like a scale of one to ten or zero to ten?
It's zero to ten.
People are just picking eight or so, so they're, they're considered pretty unhappy.
Yeah.
Just not.
Not satisfied.
So we don't have twenty percent of people that are just loathing and hating the patient.
Exactly, yes.
Because that's how it kind of reads a lot of it.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that because that's absolutely the case. These are, eighty, eighty-one percent of people are giving us nines and tens.
And that represents what the boxes do.
Yeah.
So they may be giving us tens and everything like, oh, like everything was great, everything was a ten, but it took me three weeks to get it. So that's a seven, but then everything else is a ten. So sometimes you have to dig deeper into the metrics to figure out what exactly, you know, it is, which is what I was doing when I was trying to feel like, so, you know, what are some areas of improvement?
That's a good question.
Before we launch this for the record, can, I'd like to call out the Terry Clark is now in the meeting.
Yeah, he arrived at five twenty. Could you make a note of that in the minutes, please, just so we can explain the early votes? Well, Terry, can you hear us? I'm sorry. Terry, can you hear us okay? Terry Clark?
Uh, this is Terry the Clark.
You can hear us.
I can hear you very well. And sorry, I forgot to come down there. I was working on my house remodel and I was out in the garage cleaning it out because that's where we're doing the remodel.
That's all right.
So anyway, I guess you're going to have to deal, you'll have to deal with me zooming now.
That's okay. We're in the middle of a presentation now, but we'll touch base a little later, okay?
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Terry. Sorry about that.
No worries. Good to have you, Terry. Um, financials, these are your financials, RehabVisions financials, so. Right now, I, I, you can read numbers as well as I can. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to field them. I'm happy that we're, you know, we're keeping our expenses and in check as our revenue is there. Right now, I'm, I'm happy to say that we're pretty darn close to operating margin, but always. I would love to blow these numbers out of the water. That's our goal. And that's just January, February.
This is for this first quarter.
Uh, the, the thing that's, I mean, obviously, yes, it's good to have higher numbers there, but you guys are still seeing a lot of patients.
Yeah.
Especially compared to five years ago. That's, I think, I mean, obviously, this tracks that a little bit, but you guys are still seeing a lot of patients. And that hasn't dipped much, but it's been fairly consistent.
So we'll show you the next, the next slide, the next slide.
What do you know? Are you fully staffed?
We, we are and are not at the same time. We have travelers that are backfilling and so we're, we're pretty darn close to the same staff that we had back in two thousand nineteen. But we also recognize that we have, we need to fill holes, we need. And so I guess, hey, let's turn this into a shameless plug. If any of you know physical therapists or physical therapist assistants that want to move to town and work, we would love to talk to them because we are absolutely, we have, we have positions posted at which we can talk about staffing. Well, we have a staffing slide as well that we'll talk about, but we are hiring, but we do utilize travelers to make sure that we're trying to stay on top of our volumes. Twenty twenty-two was a very difficult year, okay? So of course, twenty twenty-one was tough, you know, the pandemic hit. Twenty twenty-two, we actually went through a little bit of a slump, which was really hard, but we lost three P Ts. One went because of.
Love school and geography.
Yeah, thank you. Love school and geography. So one of our top clinicians, he actually took a job down at Pacific Northwest University and he's now an educator down there. Y'all probably know him, Bradford Callen, fantastic P T. He's teaching, so good for him. And the nice thing is now we have a plug to that university and we'll talk about that in a minute too. And that's, that was the school, the love. Jill moved out because she fell in love with some guy that didn't move here. We still hate her for it, but we support her a hundred percent and follow her love. And then geography was just a tough commute on, on somebody that didn't want to. Yeah, coming from Quincy didn't want to commute anymore. Actually, I mean, Quincy is heavily to the national, so. Uh, nonetheless, that's, and then on top of that, we had three maternity leaves in two thousand twenty-two. So take a small department, take three of them out for several weeks, it hits pretty hard, so. Twenty twenty, I'm sorry, thank you very much. Did I say three weeks? I'm sorry, yeah. So tough, but again, we tried to backfill with travelers as much as we could. And, but you'll see that this year, we're, we're getting the volume back up in the first quarter. Our twenty-two, twenty-three, our twenty twenty-two, ah, I can't even talk. Our twenty twenty-three units are back up to where we kind of ended off in twenty twenty-one and we are clink.
So the, the numbers in twenty twenty-two, you attribute that to a lack of staffing, but demand is still high.
The demand is high. I mean, now, in twenty twenty-two, we were out, coming out of the pandemic and so if you look at what our volumes are versus where our staff is and our productivity, it really, we were pretty well-stacked for the time for the number of people that wanted to come in. It was just a really weird year because people just weren't wanting to come to hospitals. And we saw that across the board in a lot of our hospital locations. They were okay going to an outpatient clinic for therapy and, and I, I mean, for just our company, our clinic division that was not associated with P Ts didn't see, that was not associated with hospitals, did not see the impact that we did in our hospital division where people just didn't want to go to the hospital, even in a location where we're offsite and where, or we're not even physically connected to the hospital. People just had a fear of coming back to the hospital. So that also impacted it quite a bit. But I do feel like, you know, with the staff that we had, we, we were still meeting the need that we have. We were losing people at other locations.
So can I ask, because you mentioned the market a couple of times. I can think of two practices in our market, Canyon View and Argonaut. Am I missing it?
So, so there's Canyon View, there's Argonaut, are you talking about just outpatient?
Yeah.
So there is one individual that was before KPH transition to RehabVisions. There's one individual who works here who now has a drone home thing going and that's it, that I know of.
But that market pre-pandemic and post-pandemic, those, the same players are still.
That I'm aware of, yes. So Craig had been at Cleveland, Northwest Physical Therapy, his, his facility unfortunately burned down. And so my understanding is that he is building it and coming back, but. But I, I have not heard personally that he is like seeing patients again in his facility.
He is seeing patients.
I was going to say, I had heard, I had heard that he was seeing patients.
Well, that's good.
But I don't, I don't know where.
Yeah.
Building in.
Is he in this building that's being remodeled?
He rented one during the downtime, he was on patients. And then we have Tamara, P T, who was started by one of our former P Ts in Ellensburg.
Yeah.
So competition is alive and well in Ellensburg. Competition's not a bad thing though. I was talking with Marcus today and it's like, if you look at how many patients we have and we look at our referral volumes, there is overall just a lack of therapists in the community. And I would say, you know, as far as taking care of the community needs, if somebody else said, hey, I want to move to Ellensburg and open my own clinic, I don't want to see that happen because I want them to come work for us and I want to increase the volumes here. But at the same time, as far as if we just look at meeting the needs of the community for therapy services, we just need more therapy services in, in Ellensburg. Doesn't matter who, who it is, what it is. I want it to be us. I want it to be here and that's what we're striving for. But, but ultimately, Ellensburg just needs more.
Is that a problem you need to Ellensburg or system-wide? There's a shortage.
There's a shortage, system-wide. I'm, I'm having trouble, I would have never guessed that I had a problem getting people presented to even look at Ellensburg jobs and it's tough. Now, the market is really interesting, if you'll just let me grant me an aside really quick. The pandemic did several things to us. There were several clinicians that actually, and you probably saw this in nursing and your physicians as well. You know, there were several clinicians that were nearing retirement that just said, I'm done, I'm out of here. I, I don't want to do it anymore. So we, we figure that we lost about three years worth of clinicians to retire. And then you have several people that just said, I'm done with healthcare. You know, they weren't retirement age, they just said, I, personally, I have a clinician in Texas that said, I'm going to go open a car wash instead. And so he left practice and went and opened a portable car wash. So anyway, I don't know what, what that's about. But I knew that happened. I knew that that was, that was coming, you know, that was also happening. The other piece that really hits hard is because the schools weren't able to get into facilities to do clinical affiliations, the students were, were held off on, on getting their, their ability to graduate with license because. their ability to graduate with license because they didn't have the clinical experience to do so. And so we got behind on the students. We are just now starting to see some of those things open back up to where we're starting to get students again, we're starting to get back into the schools, we're starting, so recruiting across the country is very difficult right now. Uh, we are, we are throwing vast resources into recruiting and making sure we're, we're getting on top of those things. But yeah, it's, it's a good question, and it's, it's not just Ellensburg.
Gift and Medicaid, is that new for our market?
Gift and Medicaid is new for our market.
Yeah, so I would say from the last six to twelve months, we've noticed a significant increase in referrals that are just being sent directly to us from Canyon View and Argonaut. There's, I mean, they, they literally just fax them right over to us, and usually it's something that is that particular insurance.
I have a thought, it's not that as a community, the percentage of Medicaid insurance change, but as far as providers.
It's, it's the amount that we're receiving, and, and we accept anyone that comes, like any referral that comes, we call them.
Scotty, you're not seeing a change in the overall payer mix, I think, but not particularly, I don't look specifically at PT, but not, um, it are changing, payer mix changes are more driven by the basket, not for us.
Mostly driven by what?
The basket, because our customers really.
So we have the private practices in the community are just declining to set Medicaid.
They're declining Medicaid.
So, yeah, we, we are seeing a larger, I mean, a, a larger increase in that patient population from referrals coming in.
Which I know is not good news. Sorry, but no, it is. Um, and we're trying to offset that by making sure that we have other programs that we're offering as well to truly bring in more of the, more of the other payers for business.
And the reason that's up for reimbursement is a lower reimbursement.
It's a lower reimbursement, and it's, and, and with it being a lower reimbursement, it's also, it does deal with, uh, uh, some populations that are little, uh, it's, it's more difficult for them to find rides, to, to be here, to, to, to. I, I, again, going back to the no-show cancellation rate, that is one of the things that absolutely ties to that. Uh, a lot of our Medicaid patients, you're gonna, you'll probably see a little bit more of this in the OT and speech field, yeah, over in rehab services, because it's a higher pediatric population. Uh, and those are, again, it's sometimes more difficult to get a child here than it is to get yourself here, uh, for some reason. Thank you. Um, units, you're gonna see the same, so these are visits, uh, I'm sorry, those were units, these are visits, not a whole lot of change in the graphics. Uh, because our, uh, the way we treat is very consistent. Uh, we've been very consistent, whether, you know, uh, as far as taking care of the patients, which I think goes back to our post-gamey scores and all that kind of stuff.
What difference do you have? Is that a unit, a unit a block of time?
A, a unit is a block of time, and it's a billable code. So when you're talking about, uh, therapy billing, it's a CPT code. You know, it's that five-digit number that, that attaches to something on which our semester. And so our units are billable codes. We average, you know, we have, you know, point six, point seven.
Depends on if it's inpatient or outpatient.
This is true.
But, yeah, our, our outpatient PT services average two point nine one.
Yeah. So on a forty-five minute, a, a unit is typically a fifteen-minute block, I think. And so you would expect on a forty-five-minute schedule, which is what we've been running, you would expect about three units per visit, and we're at two point nine one, which is excellent. I mean, that's excellent. Which says that our, our clinicians are actually billing for the time that they're spending with their patients. And they're being fiscally responsible as well as dealing with spending the time that patients need. Any questions on that? And then a visit, of course, is just one person coming in at the door on the schedule.
Regardless of how much.
Regardless of how much time. So, all right, um, this is our referrals, okay? Which is a five-year trend that we track. And basically, you'll see that this year, two thousand nineteen, we were at, uh, for the total for the year, nineteen hundred referrals, uh, or evaluations done in our system. This year, you know, it's just a quarter, but we're projected at eighteen, and frankly, that number should increase, because we're getting some things rolling. Uh, but you can just see overall what it kind of happened over the, over the past years. So, COVID. That's, that's April of twenty twenty. That was a hard month. Um, your top ten referring physicians, so shout out to these physicians for really being big supporters for our therapy services. This is just for the first quarter. These ten are, are the top, top people that are using your services, so. Give them a good thank you if you see them around the hallways or something, they utilize us.
Although one of them is a pedicure.
So, we do track.
Remind the board in case this didn't happen.
I was out of the room.
Um, rehab visions handles part of Ellensburg market. We still employ fifty-seven hundred. So I was tracking those reports upon them and, and, uh, play off family notes.
This is also significant, is that there, there is another therapy practice in that same building. Right, all this stuff is referring to.
Yeah. So Canyon View is in the same building as your physicians.
And there's no two-button in the elevator, right?
That's how we, that's how we get around that. We, we've gone in and we've put our sticker over the two buttons. So, good job to these physicians, then, thanks. Um, so as far as programming goes, so some of the fun things that we've added over, uh, recently, uh, we've added pelvic health. Bit, uh, Brittany, Brittany, um, is, is really getting excited about our pelvic, pelvic health. Sometimes this has been referred to previously as urinary incontinence. But as a, as a profession, we recognize that it's much, much larger than helping people not pee their pants. Um, I mean, it is, there's pain, there's, uh, you know, of course urinary incontinence, there's all kinds of, all kinds of other diagnoses that go along with problems with the pelvic floor. And so Brittany is, uh, really getting started on that program. She recently took a continuing meditation course that she was thrilled about. I mean, I was talking to her today, she's just giddy. Uh, but yeah, we're excited about that. Um, part of the other course is, well, also with Brittany, is the strain, counterstrain rehabilitative techniques. It's just a new approach. Um, that really helps, uh, the patients understand a little bit better on what they're doing with their muscle movements. Uh, really coordinates what with pelvic floor, um, but it also kind of, it, it grabs a market share that is not your typical orthopedic outpatient market. Um, this deals with more, uh, long-term pain, that kind of stuff. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, that's a perfect, okay.
Pediatric swallowing, thank you very much for the purchase of the pediatric feeding chair. It's been tremendous, um, a, a tremendous tool for our speech paths. We're very excited about that. We've seen some great success with pediatric uh, feeding evaluations that happen right here in the radiology department. So that's, that's fantastic. Last year, we held a, a continuing education course for all of our staff here on blood flow restriction training, which is the use of basically, uh, tourniquets. Yeah.
Say, tourniquets.
Okay, tourniquets or blood pressure cuffs to restrict the blood flow to the limb, which really helps offset the muscle. Um, and makes it feel like it's working a lot harder than it is, so we're able to rehabilitate, re- rehabilitate patients faster with less weight, which is exciting. I mean, it's just an exciting principle, and so we're, we're getting some new things going there. And then, uh, we also are trying to give some resources to our autism spectrum disorder patients, uh, by doing a DIR floor time. It's a program to help these really high-level, um, children with autism, and so we're excited about that.
DIR stand for?
Something on in floor. Um, I don't remember. I don't remember. I'm sorry. That's sugar, that's on my card. Uh, but it's a floor routine, and it's actually, uh, a, a big educational tool for parents. And so what it does is it helps take these kids that have these severe needs, and our clinicians are able to help the parents understand better what they can be doing at home. So it gives the kids care while also freeing up a lot more space in the clinic for, for patients. So it's a great, great program. So, we've also, um, I should also add, we didn't put this one on there, but there's a distributor equipment that was recently purchased by the hospital. And boy, it's, it's not the, um, condition to, to be less excited about that. She's real, she is absolutely thrilled. She says it's changing the way, um, and this is Anne. I know, and y'all know Anne. She, it's changing the way she, she evaluates practices. She's super excited, so thank you for that. We've expanded our lymphedema services. Um, one of our maternity leaves kind of forced us into this situation, but it's been, it's been a goldmine. Uh, it's, uh, the choice, actually, we did the training with our, uh, with our Coda, Chris, long before the maternity leave. But because Kat was going on the maternity leave, it's like, Chris, you gotta do this. And so that really kind of expanded the lymphedema services, which is a great, great tool for our community and, uh, really helping a lot of people, so that's, that's been fun. Uh, this is where we were just gonna talk about some of the other difficulties. We've already talked about the outpatient clinics stopped accepting Medicaid, so we don't need to really hash on that anymore. But, uh, the ebb and flow of the inpatient census based on the physician dynamics, that's been kind of a, a, a struggle for us on the inpatient side as far as scheduling somebody to come in and be dedicated to the inpatient. Uh, sometimes we have a, a physician that just admits everybody, and so we fill out the rooms, and then two weeks later, we have somebody that is not willing to fill up the rooms and admits two people. So I'm not asking any, any things to be done about that. I'm just saying that's just one of the hardships. One of the difficulties we deal with is the ebb and flow of the inpatient facility. Uh, so that's, that's one of the things. And then upcoming, we are hoping to do some LSVT BIG. Uh, if, if y'all aren't familiar with LSVT BIG, it's the, uh, it's a Parkinson's program. To help people, they, studies have shown that if you can get them doing bigger movements, that actually helps with some of the inch, uh, the tremors that they're having and all the problems again. So we're excited about offering that service. Again, adding programs that are not necessarily, uh, focused more on Medicaid politicians, but expanding the market share and expanding what the services are as well for what we're trying to accomplish. We're pretty excited about it. Any questions on programming? Okay, now the big one, staff. We need people. We know it. We know it. Um, Marcus did a nice little study, um, on where we were overall, just overall numbers. I think it was seven point six five FTEs in two thousand nineteen.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was close to the high sevens, then it went down when, when that love geography and school happened.
Yeah.
Um, and the babies, we went actually down to five since PT, not including OT and, and speech. Um, and now we're back up just a skosh over six total FTE.
Yeah. So we have backloaded that, oh, they just, three new babies in the apartment, yay! It's awesome, and they're all adorable, so ask for photos. They're, they're good. Um, we're happy for our employees, families. We have backfilled with travelers. We've had eight, eight travelers over the past year. As you all know, those are thirteen-month contracts, if we can't talk them into staying a little bit longer. Um,
Wait, it, it, wait.
It's thirteen weeks. See, I do this weeks, months thing.
Well, I will tell you thirteen-monther.
I will, I'll say, we, we.
They want to sign the contract.
Thirteen weeks, I apologize.
Do you find that they're willing to extend, or do they usually go elsewhere? What's?
Can I take this one?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so the short answer is yes, and, uh, the, the longer answer is that recently, we, we have two all-star travelers right now. They've been, I have three things I can remember, but something like twenty different sites, so they've been professional travelers for eight years, for, for eight years. And this is the only site they've ever returned to. And they, they actually, they said, um, you know, and, and they've, they've talked to me a lot about the different sites, and it's good to get their, um, their impressions of, of how we do things here, and they're like, we'll think about it. And then about four weeks into their Paris vacation, they were in a Paris cafe, and they texted us, we want to come back.
What do you say, they? Were they a traveling pair?
They were, they were, they were a couple.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah. So, so as far as do people come back? Yes. I mean, the people who've never returned anywhere in eight years decided to come back just in the winter.
Well, with us vacation, that's why it's volume.
Yeah.
So I, I actually cornered them both today, because they're currently there, and I put the hard press on them saying, hey, you know, what do you do? You're the, we're the only place you've ever returned to. Let's just make this happen. You know, where's the price point? They're like, it's not gonna happen. Not gonna happen.
New Mexico's next one.
Hey, hey, New Mexico's next one, and they're, I mean, they're kind of, they're not your typical traveler. They both travel, they're both PTs. They work off single-income family, but they work three months, they take three months off, they work three months, they take three months off. Doesn't that sound nice? That sounds nice, yeah. Now I gotta get some of that, but that's not happening for me. Two continuous travelers over the past two years, so we've really been, you know, we've liked them, we've been backfilling with travelers. Um, currently, our full-time PT staff is three, one PTA, uh, two part-time PTs with a half-time, oh, oh, equal in a, uh, full-time, halftime, full-time equivalent, halftime, full-time equivalent employee. One PTA to point six, seven, and two full-time travelers. On the OT side, we have a full-time OT and a full-time Coda. On the speech side, we have full-time, uh, one full-time and one part-time speaker. Uh, it's good staff. We have great people. We just need to add more to that. And so again, if you know people that are on our way, we'd love to employ, we'd love to bring them on board.
What is TR slash Ellen, I feel like I should.
Okay, so OTs, we all call them OTs, they're occupational therapists, but their actual licensed initial designation is occupational therapist registered slash licensed. It's ridiculous. They don't need all that letters. They just need like OT. So that's what, that's what that stands for, so. So they're, they're just, that's the OT. That's Kat. She's wonderful. All right, in our recruiting efforts, we recently attended an, uh, Eastern Washington University job fair. Marcus went. Uh, tried to drag people from Eastern to here. Uh, we're pretty excited about some of the prospects that are there. We are connected on LinkedIn, Indeed, Handshake, and several other recruiting platforms. We have four full-time recruiters. Trying to pump numbers all the time, trying to get, get more people. Um, like I said, it's a nationwide industry by hardship right now as recruiting, but we are, we are doing it.
Am I remembering correctly that it was half a dozen years ago or so, the educational requirements for PTs are all PTs, PhDs?
They are all doctors now.
So.
So any P, any undergrad PT, um, has their doctorate now, and so, I mean, that is something that happened many years ago.
Uh, I mean, more, more than, I, I think it started happening in twenty twenty, because my, my program was, was DPT.
It went?
Well, it started happening in twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Two thousand, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say twenty twenty thousand.
Boy, I, I promise I'm not having a stroke.
Yeah.
So.
I am, like you get three weeks, I'm on two views.
So it started happening around, around two thousand. And then, um, I graduated in twenty twelve. At that point, about eighty percent of the programs were, were DPT. There was a few holdout for masters. And now it's, it's across the board, or to get, you need to be a DPT.
Yeah. Which, if you want me to get on my soapbox, I can tell you another thirty minutes, I don't know what that's done to our profession, but I won't. Um, nonetheless, we do have, um, we do have our connection, which we mentioned earlier, Bradford, who now works as a, as an educator at, uh, PNWU. And exciting enough, our keynote speaker for this graduating class is yours truly, Marcus.
Yay.
And so we're, we're hoping to really, what, what we're trying to do is build those relationships with the schools that we have this internal funnel to our, our locations, uh, to bring in new grads.
Bradford, SPP?
He is a PT.
What is SPP?
Student physical, oh, this is another one, sorry. A student physical therapist. We, uh, we are now, um, I mean, students are actually coming back into the, back into the system. And so we're engaged in that. We'll bring in, in the students, so that we can, uh, it's a great recruiting tool. If you can bring somebody in on a student affiliation and they see how you operate, and they, and they like you, which they do once they get here, um,
It's pretty good for you to know who you might get.
Exactly, exactly. You get a, a little bit of try before you buy, but they're, they're students, and so they don't know anything yet. Um, but the, the good news is they see how we operate, and they get to know us, and they say, man, this is the place if you come back to me. All right. I'm ready to take your tomatoes on staffing. Anything else you want to ask on that? Our goal right now, um, obviously, we have two positions, I don't know if obviously is correct word, but we have two positions for full-time PTs posted. Um, we could probably take three or four. But we have found that if you have four posted listings, a lot of people won't look at you, because they're like, something's wrong with that place. And really, it's nothing's wrong. We just, we just need people and working out, you know? Uh, so we're keeping two P, two positions posted. We have two travelers filling those two positions. But if we hire somebody tomorrow, which we just did an interview yesterday, that has good prospects, we're hoping to, to take that first one. Uh, it will, we'll, we'll probably keep two positions open, because we just have to.
Yes, I'm sure you know, Bill, this is not a specific challenge for PT, this is not a specific challenge for Ellensburg.
Sorry.
General challenge, uh, healthcare throughout the United States.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right. And that's it. Any questions?
Bend to the PT office. Uh, Marcus, maybe, uh, maybe, uh, sometime, I, I appreciate you inviting us to your staff thing, but maybe we can do a GEMA there, and you could show us the, show us the.
I would, I would like nothing better to show off, yeah, our facility.
I remember you showed me around a few years ago. I remember you showed me around a few years ago and, uh, I mean, I'd love to go back, it's, it's pretty impressive. So, uh, so yeah, so Justin, maybe you could, uh, work with, with Marcus and find a time that, you know, that's good for you, we don't wanna in the way, uh, so that we could.
Do us a favor, don't get hurt to get in there, okay? Stay healthy.
But, um, those two buildings, um, P T and that pool are on one side and then speech and O T are on the other building and you can't miss out on speech and O T because they've done some great design work there.
Yeah, you took us, uh, when I went, took us to both, it was, yeah, it's a rehab campus, yeah.
I've seen the P T side as a patient, the other side, it would be nice to take them on a patient tour.
Absolutely, that's great, yeah, thanks, thank you, thank you.
Fun to have you.
Any, uh, any other questions or not?
No, thank you, John.
All right, yeah, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Always a pleasure being here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, next up, we have a construction update, where we report, Ron. We should be starting from, uh, start with.
I just, I just, while we find the file, I don't know if you saw that, you know, this all just made the charge.
I just.
In ground, very, very unexpectedly, so. Um, Ron was looking for that, that he resources that we reached out to his family. I know Logan couldn't support it, but it was a complete shock.
Been here more than a decade.
It's twenty one. I'm sorry, did everybody?
Yes.
Our thoughts are with the facility, seeing everybody really on that back hall, they work so closely together.
So, we are, um, in the process of pouring the foundations and foundations, so they, um, at the west side, pretty much formed up. And they will pour that next week, yeah. Have planned on starting on where radiology is gonna go back in that courtyard, because that's the deepest area. Like, there's basement tunnels below that, but the MRI, I mean, all the stuff for that, so we switched the other side so we get things going. Do whatever we can to kind of beat the water table. Um, so one of the things we're working through right now is the fire main, the way they had planned it, the fire main comes into the tunnel underneath surgery and it crosses the new tunnel. And, um, there was no way to support that pipe and continue with all the excavation and all that. And so, uh, the fire department said, well, yeah, we can't just shut off that fire main, you know, because that affects, um, this area, surgery, E D below, then you would have no fire service. So we're having to relocate that fire main, get it online, and then we can take the other, or it used to come in offline. So, um, that looks like that'll be happening, um, I think about the seventh year or so that we can there.
Any estimate on what that's gonna cost? Been for January probably for that.
Yeah, it is a change. Early, um, cost estimate was sixty thousand, but now, just in the last two days, the fire departments, uh, results of fire department connection that's on the building just outside surgery, they can't reach it now because there's a big hole there. And they said, that's, that's not gonna fly. And so what's that fire department connection does is it allows the fire department to go to a fire hydrant and bypass all the valves and that fire main coming in, so. Something was go wrong there and it could just be a maintenance person, you know, they're not real about, they can charge the line and get the fire. So they were pretty nervous about committing that. So that means we've now got to run a second line in that ditch to a new fire department connection. Out that way. Worth considering is putting it right out here, but down the road, we may be adding on to E D and then we'd have to move it again. I think of those types of things. So anyhow, that pipe will, will add cost to that, but there will be no more trenching. Um, let's see. So I can talk about the water table a little bit, right now, it's, it's actually not bad, but there is one part that they've, um, formed that's the deepest part, where there was tunnels, and they got one pump running and it's keeping up with the water getting out. And it's not bloody water, which is good because it goes into our infiltration system and you don't want to plug it, so. So far, that's looking good, but weather's warm and so we're trying to beat it. And, um, so yeah, just some of those challenges, like I just mentioned, were, you know, the delays from Alliance getting the MRI due. So we had to delay, we were supposed to start January thirtieth and pushed to April third about that. But that's kind of causing some of this. And, um, down there in the courtyard, kind of up against the heating breaker in there, they started to, to dig for that and they ran across some contaminated soil, uh, a half down. And so we had to bring in a consultant to take some, take some samples of it, send it off to the lab to find out what it is. And we finally got the lab results back. And, um, it's benzo prely, that's, that's in it. And, um, that's the one thing that was over the limits. And so now we have to excavate that, remove it and take it to a landfill. So there'll be some extra house there. The good news is, is it's not considered hazardous waste. And so that makes it a lot less expensive.
Idea where that came from, is this the original building, I mean, was there anything ever, you're a prior for hospital?
No, I've been just trying to figure it out if, nothing more, just how to check, how that got there. Because it's only about a foot, foot and a half down, and then you hit this black layer, I mean, it colors.
Yeah, is there a possibility?
We don't, because once we found it, we, um, we didn't want to disturb it anymore. Um, we have kind of dug to the south of that some and not seen it. And of course, there's been excavation on the west side and it hasn't been there, so that's strange, yeah. Kind of weird. And it's only maybe a foot deep and then you're, you're in the soil again. And so it's kind of odd, it's kind of odd. I was talking to Randy, my predecessor, and said, did we have a incinerator here at one time? And, you know, that's where they cleaned it out, just dumped it there. He said, no, we always hold that off, we did have an incinerator. The generator was over there, but not in that specific location, so I think that's not the source of it.
So, so Ron, you said that, uh, the garbage pit that was there when they built the generator, when they dug the ground up, they found an old historic garbage pit there, uh, that was here way before the hospital, uh, bought the property and was able to build it. That did, that's not part of the contamination?
I doubt it.
Okay, because I know when they dug up the ground there, they found a historic garbage pit where a lot of stuff had been buried in the ground and it actually slowed our construction down because since it was a historic thing, they wanted to be able to dig through the garbage and see if they could find anything important there, uh, so.
You're talking about the last edition?
Well, it's over there by the generator, that's when they were doing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I just wondered whether that, uh, might be associated with the contamination. Although they didn't find any contamination, uh, when, uh, they were doing that, that's what I was told.
Yeah, I don't know. Anything related there or not?
Okay, thank you.
Anyhow, um, that work will happen Monday, Tuesday, and we'll get hold up to the N A T U, their approved site to do that with. And we will move on from there. Uh, then, um, in the SEPA review, there was a comment that, from the fire marshal, that they wanted a, um, I don't remember what he called it, it's basically, uh, a voice, um, emergency response system. And so when I read that, I thought, oh, that's our paging system, we're, we're fine. Well, it's not. What he's talking about is the new fire alarm systems have voice activation. And so you can get on that system and make an announcement and it will come out wherever there's a fire alarm covered. And so, uh, those systems are U well-approved where a P A system is, is not. And so I've asked the fire marshal if we can get a variance because we do have the P A system and, um, we have, we're a defended place facility in terms of fire, so, um, there's, you don't just evacuate, you know, if there's a fire in Medserves, then, you know, you're moving those folks to a different smoke compartment. So because of those internal responses, I'm thinking it's around adding that into this project.
When will you know?
Well, he said he would, he was okay with that, but he said, I need to run it by the state fire marshal and I haven't turned back on it. Which it's kind of unfortunate because we just put in our new fire alarm system, it was all approved in the city. And it would have been nice enough at that point. So other than that, things are moving along, we're finalizing the, the schedule, uh, because of the delays we've had up to this point. And we changed some of the phasing around, trying to tighten, um, the timeline on that a little bit without affecting our operations too much. And so we met with Amy and it kind of affects her area more than anybody. And looked at that a little bit differently and we came up with a plan that would give them, um, more of the outside wall that they're attaching to and, and breaking through so they don't have to break that up into sub-phases. And so, um, so they're re, reshifting everything to accommodate that and then we'll have the final schedule. So.
Yes, um, during the original bid process, we went back and forth with Walker and a little bit of, of the relationship with him. You came out pretty strongly and I, we got great reports about the superintendent and the, the project manager.
Yeah, they're, I've been giving more company over. It's, it was a little bit tough at first working with them because they, um, their staff, like, we, some of these construction, we do about five people and three more, I'm sort of kind of overwhelmed trying to keep up with them. But they are on it with all those cementals and getting ahead of the game and, you know, making sure that things are gonna get roughed into the right place. And so it's, it's a challenge keeping up with them, but at the same time, that is good work. So, um, yeah, it kind of takes a little while to learn each other.
Okay. Questions for Ron? Do you have anything else, Ron?
Um, it was just, I, I got a little chart that shows what our estimated project cost and kind of where we're at now. And so we're well under at this point, but, you know, these change orders, when I get numbers, will of course change that.
Good. Well, this is an exciting project and I look forward to piece of it, so thank you.
You're welcome.
It doesn't seem like full straight. Any good when I walked behind the hospital and we were missing the back half of the hospital? Ron!
Okay. Um, do you want to show us that, Ron, or is that?
Sure.
Is it good enough to just?
Let me see, project status. Yeah, so, um, the top number there, which I think is twenty-five million and some change. Yeah, thank you. That's, that's where we're at now, um, so that's construction and owner costs. And so twenty-nine million down there is what we had allotted, that includes our contingencies. And so we're keeping an eye on that.
Okay.
And the schedule tracking, there's just really nothing there yet because we just don't have the final, we're moving along. Uh, but I just don't have a baseline or measure of it.
Okay. Anything else, Ron?
Um, so usually in April, I do my quarterly report, but I didn't see it on here, so I didn't know.
Again, another one that I, I took them all as presentations that we would be presenting to the board, and again, it was, it's by misunderstanding about.
We can, uh, we can add, I mean, if you're ready to do it, we can add you in the, into the, later in the, the agenda.
Yeah, I don't think the sheets are near, so we'll.
They're, yeah, they're not right, they're not right now, so I can pull it up here and we can talk about it.
So is your quarterly? I mean, do you want us to add you to the agenda right now? I mean, are you ready to do it today?
I, I, I can do it, yes, I can, but you just.
Or would you rather wait?
Review it, I can come back next month, so.
Are you good with that? I think it would be good so we could review the.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Uh, so just, just make a note of that to make sure he gets on the agenda and then we get, uh, his information on the pack, so. Uh, anything else, sir, Ron? Okay. Uh, everybody, any questions? Okay, thank you very much, Ron, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Uh, Justin, if you wouldn't mind also just to take a note of who's on Zoom and who's in person, I think it might be good. I'll talk with our secretary about whether we want to make the note app, but it's, I don't know, it might be good to. Anyway, so if you wouldn't mind, just keep, uh, make a note of who's on Zoom and who's in person, that'd be good to. Okay. Well, let's, uh, let's head up to, uh, course dashboards then. Uh, this, uh, looks like we're all done with presentation. The first up is Manny, also with quality, go ahead, man.
Yeah, so I, I'm there. I can't. Page eleven. Um, I think we had, I just taken a question.
Yeah. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to review works and the dashboard. Let's start with the report, are there any questions about, uh, the reports?
Clarification, and I, I know you've touched on this before, but do staff on staff workplace, that's not necessarily physical, so.
Right. And the vast majority of any of the workplace violence incidents, and Ron can talk about this more, other folks that are part of reviewing each of these cases, but it's usually, it's verbal.
Okay.
I can't think of the last staff on staff that was physical.
Okay.
Are you, uh, looking forward to the surprise D M V visit, visitor, or does it give you stress?
I actually, I don't know, I feel really good about this year.
I'm so not surprised that that's your answer.
Talk about your cheat sheet. Oh, well, there's been, um, something that they did at Harborview when I was there, and I think you did it in Medserves the first year I was here. It's just I've been wanting to do for years. It's like a newspaper-style piece of paper that you can fold up and it'll fit in your pocket and it says, you know, who's your board members and what's your mission, vision, values, what are the fire codes and the, you know, um, what are the kill times on your wipes? Just kind of tips and, you know, oh, and they show up, maybe make sure that nothing's in front of all the electrical panels and, um, just kind of a, I don't know, I think of it as, yeah, cheat sheet, like, oh crap, they asked me a question that I, I don't often get, but I should know the answer to, I can pull that out and, and look at it. So, um, I hope to get that out Monday to folks. They usually show up on Tuesday, so, you know, they're not coming this week. Um, I, I'm really guessing May eighth, so I'm excited to see if they actually show up that week or if it'll be before then or, um.
There's so much of that, but the recall is just being on the spot, it can be something really basic, but I know that sometimes my mind goes blank and.
Well, purpose, you know? And, and sometimes they use different language, and so that's one of the things I think is an advantage of kind of putting it in, in kind of something written down that says, you know, this is. you know, this is your, your safety officer is Ron Erlecker, like how often are people thinking about that every day? But it's something we should know. So it's a good reminder, even if they never even get asked that question, but.
Is that something they'll be able to print off themselves or that will be distributed? Or do they assemble it themselves from data that they find?
No, I was thinking about doing like this kind of a, not a scavenger hunt, but you know, we do gift cards or, or things, but some surveys, people could enter their answer in and get drawn for like, you know, yeah.
Maybe a little fill in the blank or. Yeah, matching.
Yeah. Over the next few weeks as we go, but no, I'm putting it together because I'm trying to get it to one sheet of paper so that people don't have to search for that information or make it really easy for folks.
Clever.
Yeah, so taking the department directors on Monday and then distributing out, probably printing for people so they don't have to worry about making it easy for them to have available for them. I am really excited.
Yeah, we all knew that was happening.
I know.
Give me a big old high five.
So any other questions about the reports before we get to the dashboard? Okay. Is there anything I want to call our attention to, Mandy or Josh?
I, I had Justin distribute to you and then shoot the actual questions. Jim, the survey and the one for hospital folks and just one for, so there you go. We will know later.
And is this out there currently or is this coming in the near future?
Near future. So the staff won't fill out a paper survey, but we wanted to make sure they had access to the questions before they go into the survey. So we just were finalizing this draft and yeah, we're gonna go ahead and get that out to folks ahead of time so they can kind of see what the questions look like.
So I think you, you've been in touch with the board, but so this is something, you know, with the satisfaction, yeah, right, the employee satisfaction survey?
Yeah, employee agent.
Employee agent survey. We, as you remember, we did some encouragement to have them complete those and we got a real good response rate we would like. Good response rate on this, so I think you guys may have heard of this, but they're gonna kind of enlist us to go to a couple of, of tunnels and other, other, other meetings. I went to the, to the employee.
Forum.
Forum. The employee forum recently, it says sort of a plugin. Anyway, so just, you know, keep your eyes open for an email.
I think it's important that we expressed that the last thing this was done, we really took their words to heart and reflected on that and incorporated what we learned into the future and such. So I'd like to have that information again.
And just so you know, actually, the response rate on this last survey, the safety survey was not very good. The engagement survey was really great when the board engaged staff. So I'm, I'm hopeful we can get as good of a response on this patient safety survey as we got on the engagement survey with, with your health.
Is there a number, like if we hit it, there's an incentive for the board?
Yeah, I mean, you can do that, right?
I'll do anything for ISE. All right, so that's. All right, we'll, we'll do what we can. Anyway, I, I'm sure I speak on behalf of the board that we're, that we're happy to, to, you know, help in any way we can to encourage.
And we are keeping it open quite a long period of time, so we'll, we'll, we'll call on you.
All right, good deal. All right, so let's look at the dashboard. You guys hopefully had that chance to look over.
I'm, I, I really liked the format that we're putting to the clinic at the front first time. That's exciting to me to have that. The Medicare Wellness visits for January were the highest we've had in 12 months and I think that's really exciting. You know, and that's really good compared to other hospitals our size who are with clinics. With the rural larger, we see that. And then internal medicine got to 100% on their fall risk training, which is just awesome. And seeing FMCE at the first time of goal for diabetic foot checks. So really excited about that work and seeing that clinic data on the dashboard.
I'll talk about this a little later, but there's like this AJ meeting recently and one of the sessions I went to was about improving patient safety and things. And one of the things I was reminded about there was all this stuff, falls, needle sticks, all this stuff. You know, we see the, the numbers on the dashboard, but there are all these people working behind the scenes on these standing committees and where they're talking about this stuff all the time. And I just, I think it's something, it's good to sort of remind everybody, I mean, most of you are aware of it, I'm sure the board's aware of it, but just how much work goes into bringing these numbers, that, you know, like numbers of falls down. There are all sorts of people working on this all the time. So anyway, I, I just, I was reminded of that and I just wanted to kind of remind people and also express my appreciation for all the work that you guys do behind the scenes.
Falls are actually a great example because we did just have the safe patient handling education fair yesterday that a lot of staff have to go through. And there's a presentation about falls and, and it's to help prevent worker injuries too. And so, yeah, there, there is a lot more work behind the numbers than just reporting a number.
Yeah, it's not like we just sort of, you know, register what happens. It's just kind of move on. It's, it's always a lot of work going on in prevention and right, you know, trying to identify the problem. So anyway, it's, it's appreciated.
And, and reporting as well, and I really appreciate that staff takes the time to stop and in the preference reporting system, report falls that didn't result in injury. But, but it tells us something about our equipment, about our policies. And I think they're particularly around falls, they're really good about doing that. And, you know, it would be easy to blow that off if they end the first, you know, or they, they caught the first night, there's terminology.
Yes.
But they report that and it really is very.
That's, so on the patient safety survey, one of the topics, areas to look at is your reporting culture and if people feel safe to report. And I feel like we have a really strong reporting culture here, but so it'll be interesting to see how that is reflected in our survey. I just, I love the suicide risk assessment intervention on the, on page 15 there in the middle. It's just looking really good. And then above that, the blood product documentation, that's looking really good, that the two cases that missed on that, the documentation was there, it was just like a few minutes late. So they're doing really great work and you can see FPP on the pain reassessment after medication is, they're, they're improving there on that reassessment. So those are all things that DMV is gonna ask us about, what's going on in these, you know, he, there's a problem before, where you at now, what are you doing, how's it improving and does your board know about it? So.
Do they ask for interpretation if we see this trend? Will they ask staff, what, what did you do to get to this point or not so much?
What they usually ask is, they'll ask them, what's your, what quality improvement work are you working on? Tell me about what you're doing to improve quality or safety in your unit. And so they expect staff to know about their, be able to say, oh, we're working on falls or restraints or we're, we're working on this and talk about it.
Any questions about the dashboard? Thank you very much. I do still appreciate the glossary.
Well, I will keep it, putting it in until you tell me to stop.
I, I like it.
But we, especially, I thought you said some things, change the word, that, that would help.
Okay, so Julie, no written.
There was no written report. I would say when I met with all of you, I told you I was, because it's way too early to find this. So basically what's been consuming my time is upper county, which Ron is going to be addressing. She brought a visual aid for you all. So we have three issues from upper county that we've been working on. Provider contracting, which Dr. Martin's gonna have some exciting news for us this evening. So that, that, we've got some wins on and then preparing for the survey, Asian culture, which he just talked about. That's, that and AJ conference this week, this week.
Yes. Yes, it was.
Yeah, and, and I don't, I don't mean to sort of move things around on the agenda, but after three years of not being able to get any capital and finally being back in one of those little conferences, the issues were exactly.
Same.
And it was, but it was an interesting trip and you were, you were watching through people than you had in the past and those that were there were mostly problems. Was Washington State or State?
State.
Okay. I'm happy to answer questions. I apologize for not having your report, but it's covered.
It's all right. We, we know where the real work is done.
I'm just here to point at people.
Are you handling the internal report? Is that separate from the question you just asked?
Nope, I will answer what I can.
I don't know who wrote the text, but I'm just trying to make sense in recruitment. Third line says, of the 11th position. And then over here on, on the one page earlier, employees hired 10. I'm trying to figure out, is there a correlation between the text and the charts on the page earlier? And that was gonna lead to my follow up question one side.
I don't know the answer to that and our, our leave and human resources is.
And then, yeah, I was gonna say, maybe I should just wait till Amanda's back or somebody's here to actually do it. It's, I guess what I'm interpreting from the text is sometimes we say an employee was hired, it actually was somebody who already had a job there and they moved over. So, so we also then got a vacancy. If that person's hired, they're giving up a job and just created another vacancy. So I don't know if any of the board members care, but I almost love one breakout line of who's actually new to KDH, which helped me have a better understanding of how are we recruiting overall? I don't know if anybody else worries about that information. I just would be curious. Because if we're just hiring internally, going in circles, we gotta get more outreach.
Easily just infer it from the total employees.
Honestly, you're doing that in your head.
I see where you're going with this and to me, it's, it would be really valuable to know how, how the advancements within the organization.
Which is the thing I'm actually interested in too, is that, you know, who was able to progress inside and find a new position and stay with the company and, you know, hopefully they're happy to hear and that's why they want to stay, so.
I would appreciate it if we could talk to Amanda about this before we do this because I'm thinking about complicating factors like our MA apprentices who don't leave a position, but now they fill a different role once they move out, they turn to school ladder and everything. You're right, it, it is very fluid. And advancement in the organization, I, I don't know. A lot of people move laterally and.
So that would necessarily, necessarily capture everybody.
Right. So, but, and one of the reasons I wanted to have, let Amanda sort of frame it for you, is allowing people to create a career path within KDH that doesn't necessarily a big promotion in the same department is a big part of what she's doing in terms of employee engagement and.
Somebody might be driven by a different path to scoring, which is.
But, so I don't have good answers.
That's great.
A lot of, lot of work being done there. And, you know, one of the things, yeah, Amanda will be, we'll give her something if you want to.
At first I thought those numbers were typos until I saw the, there are the, the median average, just like.
Interesting that, that people in the organization, we had two openings in HR recently and I know specifically about it because they were filled by.
His people.
So we, an individual from materials management moved over to the recruiter. And she's now a. And then one of our patient registrars who has made for the screen, it's also, it's built on when there's a position open in HR. And so in, in some ways, those, those numbers indicate people are happy with KDH and they, they recognize that there's opportunities within the organization. So anyway, those are just, that's, that's anyway, I don't want to jump into the verbiage that I know HR has.
That makes sense.
When you first started your story, I thought you meant two people from the financial department escaped and went to HR. I see what you're saying, the other people on the hospital, you're just aware of them going to HR. They weren't accountants or.
But anyway, I, I think it indicates that, you know, the goal is that pay, employees that swear on things like that. And I think people recognize that there's opportunities within the organization to, to do different things and to advance also.
But I also think they're seeing that. And I, I think the whole organization has seen the promotions within the organization and they're seeing people trying out new jobs and new career paths. And, but, so I think there's a real awareness of that and it's not by accident.
Other questions for Julie? Next, Julie? Okay. Next up, CD Utley, I should, I do want to say something about, in case you guys don't all see the announcements, DeeDee recently had an educational milestone, Master of Science, MS degree in nursing. That's a call her master, not.
No. No, but I, I do want to thank you because, you know, just the support this last year and a half to be able to be here tonight and do get my first official board report and being in this role. And it's been a whirlwind first three weeks, kind of on my own. And this team has been phenomenal. And the ones outside of this room, so, which I hope, you know, first time doing this report, of course, I'm following Vicky's lead and I will be open to any feedback, you know, too long, too much, you'd rather hear about something else, so please let me know. But the report starts on page 24. And I started with clinical education, staff development, because I'm learning what this full-time and part-time nurse have been doing and it is a lot. As Mandy has said, we just have the safe patient handling, which was yesterday, that is a mandatory class that we offer twice a year and they had 88 people go through. So that was phenomenal. It was very busy. We are looking at doing, we do kind of an abbreviated version in upper county and we're also going to explore doing one at the MAC, which I haven't had the time to talk with Stacy, to provide an opportunity, something for the clinic employees, because with construction, parking, it's really hard for people to just pop in and out. You might drive around, you know, looking for parking, might be quicker just to walk here if it's a nice day than move in your car. But well attended, was very, very, just a lot of work that goes into it, but a very successful day from what I hear. We also, back in March, had our clinical education days and we're looking at doing another repeat in the fall instead of just doing it once a year, but doing a second one with new topics that will be put together by this, this group. The last item on that, the collaboration item about the nursing staff develop, development committee, this is a new committee that came out of our WSNA bargaining agreement that we just passed, that you just approved. And this is the staff development committee that is made up of, is the name nursing reps. We have reps from each of the departments and we have our nursing directors.
Bless you.
Staff development, nurses are running that. We had our first meeting and they just, this week had a four hour working session. They're still trying to figure out exactly what we're gonna do in this committee and we really are putting it back on our nurses to drive it. So it's a, an excellent model of shared governance. You know, the other departments are just kind of going status quo. Jeff has been heading up that Big Phillips upgrade, which you will probably see on a Capitol request in the upcoming months. I'm learning quite a lot from Jim about food nutrition services, so this is my stepping out of the nursing realm and I've just been really amazed with all the work that he's done and am learning quite a lot, but.
Did he make you wear a pair of net?
No, we did in my office. But I am going on a field trip soon, so I will be back there.
Where is that, uh, based here with external visitors? Is it open back to pull force now?
It's, it's open, but I don't, we're not really advertising it, but you know, people have been, you know, visitors. I don't, I haven't seen like the community members coming in like we did, you know, pre pandemic. But it's been.
What they could if they walked into it.
They're taking cash and cars.
And he's fully staffed. Lots of new faces down there.
It's so pretty down there.
It is. Very nice. Um, you know, surgical services, you know, I I think Amy gave a nice recap here. Very busy and, you know, just trying to plan around this, the construction. Uh, the emergency department and urgent care, Jason has now, I think, entered his second month. He's our interim director. And, um, has made some some really great improvements. Uh, we are busy. Pretty much status quo there. I know he's just had staff meetings with both the emergency department and the urgent care. Want to thank you again for that ultrasound machine. Um, it is here and I believe we're working on the training. The evade training I do want to call out. Um, for the first time, when our instructor was here a couple of weeks ago, we did the level three. Usually we've offered the level one, which is the intro and the level two, which is just a little more um, of that in case you were in an incident with hands on. The level three takes it even a little further with those really aggressive patients. And, um, I, we're going to request that we at least offer level three each time that the instructor, Patrick, um, comes back. The ED staff that attended said it was wonderful. It just, it takes it to just that next level with restraints, with, um, you know, your safety, our our visitors, our staff, um, our patient's safety. And it also talks about the reporting, which I think is very important. And that's going to be one of my things. I really want to work with our house supervisors is that when these big events do happen, you know, the code grays, that we are definitely reporting and getting all the data and debriefing with the staff in real time. And then seeing what what do we need to do moving forward.
So you just had talked about this trainer being a very capable consultant?
Yes, excellent. And in fact, we were, I didn't get a chance to speak with him on this visit, but we have a lunch date set up for when he's returning, um, kind of this mid summer. And I, you know, just love for him to walk through the parts. He's been through the ER. He's been through other areas of the organization. And he can give very good tips. He also has a lot of great contacts out there, whether it's policies, what can we do in our rooms? So he's, he's just been, I'm I'm so happy that he continues to to return to teach. Case management and social services. I'll tell you, that's another area I'm learning a lot. Um, the staff is small but mighty and the whole inpatient side of of patient care, I'm learning every day. So looking at, you know, doing some education with them and actually having a staff meeting, because they usually don't see each other as only one is here at the time. And the last group I'm I'm really honing in on is our health supervisor. So we do have 13 persons that fill that role. And that does include Vicki. So she's she is still here. And I'm looking forward to having a first staff meeting just to talk about expectations. You know, what they see their role as and maybe, you know, ways that we can make some improvements. And yeah, I just want to thank everyone again for the support. Send out some questions. Yeah.
It says BSN.
I, well, this was, this was, you know.
I was gonna correct that right now.
You guys know.
Like an update.
Flash.
Yeah.
Any questions? Before we talk before, we're gonna do your hazing later.
Oh, I I was gonna say you're being really nice, right?
Uh, any questions? For us, yeah, thank you very much. Welcome.
Awesome.
Okay, next up, uh, Rondo, Chief Nurse Larry.
Yes, my report is on page 27 and 28. And, um, the only update that I have is the city of Clealum uh, posted today, uh, open comment period for, uh, 47 degrees north application. So they'll be having public comment through, uh, May 31st. So if you would like to write a letter, um, I'm sure you probably will. Jamie Carmody and I, our attorney, played phone cast today, so I wasn't able to connect with him, but I'm sure he'll be reaching out with a letter on behalf of possibly District One and District Two again. And then as Julie commented, there's so much going on in upper county with the fire districts. I put a map up over there that shows you where those fire districts are located. So Fire District Six is Ronald, and that is who is looking at wanting to merge with the city of Roslyn. And then there's also Fire District Seven, um, which is the, is closer to KBFR, but it still skips over to Thor. Oh, um, I think the hospital district. I don't know actually the number.
Yeah, it's one, not the one.
You're there.
So is there, do they engage with district owners, district owners not interested or?
As far as Thor goes?
As far as the consolidation effort?
As far as, as who?
So for District Seven, um, talking about consolidating with KBFR and then bridging over Thor.
So we should probably be really careful with the language.
Sorry, I know it's probably getting it really wrong.
Well, so I will just say, I appreciate after the combined meeting, the special meeting that Rhonda talks about, you know, her report. They, at that meeting, I was online, I think Rhonda was there in person and Scott even there in person as well. They acknowledged, talked to everybody, does anything to do with, went, oh, we forgot to talk to hospital. So, um, they have since reached out to us and I think Justin's put together a meeting for us to talk to the consultants. They laid out three options, a regional fire authority, a consolidation and contracting for the circus. So it, uh, and I believe they see contracting as the service for the service as something they can achieve now. The others who are not. But, um, you know, the fact that EMS in 89% of the call room medical related EMS is independently led and and has been provided by Medic One for four years. Uh, there needs to be addressed in this conversation.
Sorry for my hiccup in terminology.
No, no, no. I I know they, I I felt in touch from the.
Yes, I apologize for.
So, yeah, so we're, um, representing District Two. We'll be meeting with the consultants in near future via Zoom to get their take on how they think. What I, what I know so about that.
Um, I think we also wanted to meet with the Fire District Seven Commissioners and not the Hospital District Two Board of Commissioners, join to.
Yeah, the community members up there in Clealum and Roslyn. Are they interested in this 47 degrees? I mean, are they?
Oh, yes.
Does it sound like maybe the city council meeting had some good turnout or something?
They they had a very strong showing at the city council meetings and they've been very vocal against it and writing letters to the city. So there is very strong opposition to it.
And this public comment period will lead to this all before the city council actually votes on whether or not to approve the final.
Yeah, I saw.
It's friendly too, so.
All right. Yeah, I saw there was an article on the Daily Record about that that meeting.
So we're, Rhonda, quick question. Um, so, uh, I mean, this has been going on for a long time. And what, was there some kind of arrangement, like years ago with the city council in Clealum over this or?
I think the original application was in 2002 with Sun Cadia. And so there was a plan that was approved for the Bullfrog Flats urban growth area at that time. And the plan that was approved by the city council at that time is vastly different. Um, they have withdrawn that application. It's been bought by Sun Communities. And so instead of just regular homes and a a large business park, it's now the RV sites and modular homes.
So collectively, Hospital District One and Hospital District Two has not taken a position that we oppose 47 degrees north. We have very, very clear concerns about mitigation in terms of the services that this different, this change in the plan will cause both for Hospital District One and for Hospital District Two. And we, our latest communication with the city is that we don't believe our concerns have been adequately addressed in the environmental assessment impact study. So. So again, we're not pro or con. We're, you have an answer to our concerns.
Other questions? Good, thank you, Rhonda. Next up, we have Stacy Lance, Chief Clinic Operations. Stacy?
Yes, my report starts on page 29. I wanted to add some additional cardiology notes with scheduling. The cardiologists have been working really hard to increase access in that clinic.
Good.
For the month of February, they actually had 103 visits, a no show rate that was 11.96%. And we had 72 patients still in the schedule. With all the work that team has done, we are now looking, as of April 26th, we have seen 148 patients in that clinic that month. Our no show rate is down to 6.9% and we have 35 patients in queue to begin with the cardiology. So that group has been working really hard to open up additional appointments. The patient service reps now call, we're not just relying on the sterner product, another reminder. Our PSRs are calling our patients the day before and trying to get ahold of them and give them a reminder for the appointment. So they work really hard to increase access at cardiology.
I bet the patients appreciate that. You couldn't imagine waiting for such an important thing. They believe you realize it's past five. Oh, yeah, that's that's.
So my dashboard probably doesn't show every, that impact on what that has done to our third next available appointment. I just got those statistics yesterday from Emily. I felt it was important to share with you now. I'm open to take any other questions.
There's a couple of questions about the rapid access clinic.
Yes.
One is a question I think has already been answered, but I just want to make sure I got it. When we open it, it's gonna, it's gonna be exclusively for existing KBH patients.
You have to have a PCP assigned at KBH.
Right. And, um, is there a difference between rapid access and urgent care?
Yeah, it it was interesting. Um, I had Colin, the clinic manager, attend the collaborative talk on with some other people in the collaborative who have done this. Patient load wise, known, but really the definition, what we're seeing is rapid access is a focus on patients that are already assigned into your healthcare system, where urgent care is usually 100% open access.
Okay. Okay. And then last thing, this may be more of a question for Scott or or maybe for Julie, but how is this sort of thing, someone asked me, how is this sort of thing built? Uh, is it, is there a a different rate or, uh, do insurance, um, plans tend to cover it less than regular primary care physicians?
This is actually a clinic. So we build just like our family practice clinics.
Okay.
Versus our urgent care in Clealum is set up as a hospital department and that's built differently.
All right.
See, this is a clinic. This is meant to be an extension of your primary care.
Oh, all right.
Yes, it's also part of the Medical Arts Center, World Health Clinic. So, uh, if you are seeing a doctor on the third floor, second floor, the bill will be exactly the same. If you're a Medicare patient, it will be the same. Medicaid will be the same. So there's not a corresponding, um, urgent care. There's a professional fee and a facility fee. This looks exactly the same.
Oh, I see.
Is there any other quality visits?
No, that's, uh, that's good to know. Yeah, I'm sure. I mean, when, yeah, when I've mentioned this, I think people assume that, uh, that since it's since you have that super quick access, that there would be some sort of premium, even have to pay for it. But it sounds, I mean, that sounds like I can tell.
I'm going to consider. We've got.
You guys, yeah, hold it back.
Can you remind me when the hours of walk-in shoot?
It will be 7:00 AM to 6:30 PM Monday for Saturday.
And, uh, John had a quick question.
It it's walk up or you make an appointment that day?
Yes, right now. Uh, the thought is you can call up to your primary care and if they don't have an appointment available, what we will be offering is you can schedule an appointment with you or you can choose to walk anyway.
This will be really interesting to to see. I mean, I can sort of imagine this, especially with, if some of the wait times are a little long. So I can see this just sort of blowing up.
I think so.
In a good way.
I I definitely could.
Very thoughtful.
And all ages?
Yes, uh, one thing we are excluding is OB patients. We feel OB issues need to be seen with their OB provider. So they are seeing babies all the way home.
But pregnant women with a cold must be seen first.
We can see that, but if you're having an OB issue, say you've got some bleeding, some cramping, that really should be addressed by the OB.
Yeah, they're not excluding pregnant women. I don't want to see that story. It's awful too much. Well, that's exciting.
It is very exciting.
Yeah.
From like morning, 7:00 AM.
I feel like we've pre.
Yes.
We think we're supposed to open it in March of 2020. Is that right?
Better late than never.
Yeah.
But I'll try to get something wrong with me so I can be the first. Uh, any other questions?
The the phone upgrade, can you give me a sense of how you feel about how that's going?
I I actually feel it's going really well. I think we are identifying, I know patients are complaining about it now. It's usually I have to do voicemail. We don't get 100% live person on the phone. And we are looking closely at, I launched the voicemail. We know sometimes it takes us two hours to get to the voicemail. It's a heavy volume. And it needs to go back to the clinical staff and sometimes there's a delay in for them getting that piece. So now we're really looking at how we can level this work and making sure we have the ability to shift our staff around and try to meet the needs. Some of the challenges have just been callouts with being sick. You have 14 PSRs in the clinic and now you have nine for the day. So I feel, I think that work is going well. And I think we're getting close to some decision point, Sean. We excluded staffing and we excluded software. And we want to make sure that we have our efficiencies in our system before we look at what is ultimately the desire and what is the cost.
So one of the things Stacy and I got a chance to catch up on this today and, um, we have two local hospitals about our size, Crosser and Mason Pigeon, right? Who have call centers. And what we, in in fact, the conversation today was having sort of a staffed improvement group invited a couple of board members in. And this is more in the context of the 2024 budget. And say this is where satisfaction is now. The cost, so is is it acceptable to board, it's been from a patient satisfaction perspective, to get a voicemail? As long as that voicemail is returned? Or do we want to move in the direction of saying 95% of the time, somebody's sending us a phone and deal there. And if that's the standard that we want to move towards, what's the cost of doing that? But because we're going to consolidate a lot of those PSR positions, we'll probably have to add some, um, software costs associated. So the the teeing it up as we've improved, here's what we've done, here's what we're at. What is the cost of moving? What standards do we want to have? So is that?
That is correct. What we know is, um, both quality and even Michelle has said they don't see the number of complaints that they issue regarding the phone. But now the issue is it went to voicemail. Or I just, you didn't call me back. And now I've waited two hours for a comeback, but I want an answer now. I don't want to wait two hours. I think Jeff was talking with Mason and I think they said their call center is 25 FTEs, 25 staff with 25 people. That's massive.
Yeah.
So like we said, it's really looking at what is acceptable. And if we want to go on a route where someone always answers that call, here's what the cost could be.
I'm not sure if I have a basis for this opinion, but, uh, I think that like, if someone has to leave voicemail, there's sort of this initial, um, you know, you know, someone's initially upset. But if you get a phone call back and, you know, a half hour, I think after that, you don't think it's such a big deal, you know? I think the the not having it answered at all, that can be very frustrating. But if it's answered quickly, I'm not sure you need to talk to someone to be there.
One one statistic we're not seeing drop is the percentage of duplicate calls. That is for running around 45%. So you figure if we're getting 600 calls a day, 45% of those are patients calling. So you figure if we're getting six hundred calls a day, forty-five percent of those are patients calling back, and we're still contacting patients who have called more than five times, and usually the answer is, I didn't want to leave a voicemail. I don't like using the portal, and I want to talk to somebody. And I will continue to call until somebody answers the phone. So I, I think we're making really good progress and really being attentive to what we can do within what we have now. And eventually, we're going to have to make a decision of where do we want to be and how much are we willing to spend for that.
Yeah, I don't know what's, I mean, yeah.
Stacy, you can also add that we added, we added technology, right? So we added the visual voicemail with the Zoom phones, right? So, I mean, we've added increased licenses for that, so I don't know if you want to comment.
That is in my report. The other thing we thought from that is it allows the staff now to visually scan all the voicemails and help prioritize those. So they can easily pick out, oh, that's a three-yes call, that's someone who's canceled an appointment for this afternoon, and try to address higher priority calls. So we've gotten some technology that wasn't that expensive, that has been able to help the staff address those. The anxiety with it, though, now, is they all see that number. Jeff gets a pop-up, Angela gets a pop-up. You get a pop-up every time there's a voicemail.
Which number do I see?
You can see that there's sixty voicemails. A really good example on my memory is, no matter how many staff we have working that queue, that number stayed at sixty almost all day long. And it was just like.
So as quickly as they came off, they were coming back off.
But it, it allows us to say, oh, shoot, we need to call some people in and, and get some help on the voicemail system today. And like I said, they can triage those because they can quickly read through them and get them to where they need to go.
And a lot of people are twitchy because they're all getting these numbers for cases now.
It seems to me like, I mean, if people are leaving voicemails and, and having the call returned, it seems to me like the, the subset of people who are so discouraged and don't want to leave a voicemail, doesn't seem to me like that would be big enough. I guess I'd have to look at data, but it would be a big enough number to justify such a big space.
Well, we'll, we'll really look at that, and, you know, maybe it isn't twenty-five staff, maybe it's to be add five staff. I, I don't know what it is. And if you create a call center, you are pulling a lot of work out of the clinic. So you're pulling a number of those positions out of the clinic, so it's not in that twenty-five add.
The people who I had heard from, I mean, heard from everyone from a while, they were frustrated by is having it ring and nothing. They tried that three, four times, nothing, and then they finally just either give up, or they just drive into the dang office. But I, you know, getting a voicemail, or having to leave voicemail which returns, I, I don't think that's, I don't think that's a huge issue, I mean, to my mind. I think that, that solves the main problem, that is getting no answer called.
And I also look at, if forty-five percent of my calls are duplicate phone calls, that's a lot of volume, that's.
Yeah. People who aren't okay needing a voice.
Yeah.
None of those voicemail clients are from me.
Was it, right, so, but the question is, do they, is it that they worry that it won't be returned, or?
I think, so, for example, you had sent me what to look at, and in that patient regard, he called at nine. He left a voicemail, it was a Monday, it was the day the calls were always high. It took us two hours to get to that voicemail. It needed triage. He sent it to the clinic, staffed them back. It took them two hours to get to that piece, too. So we have a patient who was looking for guidance of, do I come in or not? I did tell him, you know what, we're having rapid access over the May. We're looking at some off-site phone triages. We have things coming to help expedite that service that I think may impact some of our phone issues yet, too. But that one patient is really upset and has high anxiety because he was trying to get help to decide, do I come in or do I not come in? Can I wait two hours for that decision? Or you know what, we'll have rapid access, you could just come in.
Yeah, I wonder if you want to add that to the voice.
So, and we will have, what we're asking, we'll call out triage, and we'll also, if you're looking for a same-day appointment, press one to talk to the patient service rep. So we are changing the, the phone tree to show some of those things. So I will, I can do another in-depth report out in another month or two, and like, you know, after we do those site visits where we are and share what some of those costs are. But I think we're making really good progress on the phones, and I'm not seeing the complaints that we were, I mean, it used to be.
And to your point about your discussion with this patient, the patient doesn't know if it's going to be two hours or twelve hours or two days, so hopefully not.
Or thirty minutes.
Yeah, yeah. And then there are people like me who steal away the cleanest of their day to reserve, at least get their foot in the door to talk to somebody, get the ball rolling. I don't know that I can hang a call thirty minutes later, the nature of my lifestyle.
Right.
That might be something that I just see the notification on my phone, and I can't get back to it for eight hours, so.
Yeah, there was some.
I think there are choices about how.
That's true. I think the rapid access will.
I'm, I think that will, and I think maybe even the off-site treatment will get those.
Is that the access service?
That is the access.
Can you help or not that in treat?
Sure. So what it is, is it is an outside service. It is a trial we're doing with FME, just because of volumes and it's difficult to find nursing. And the phone tree will be, if you have symptoms and would like to speak to a nurse, press two. So it goes to the access nurse who answers the phone as K V H Family Medicine. They have a person who takes all the information, and they use the Schmidt, Schmidt-Thompson guidelines for triage. They automatically get assigned a new duty level. If it's a one, it will go directly back to a nurse. If it's a two, three, four, or five, they have a callback timeframe. They are accredited through the company that accredits call centers, and they are held to a standard of no longer than thirty minutes for callback. But they actually have set their standards based off of the triage level. So I think like a level two is ten minutes to call. So then a nurse who called the patient back, triaged the patient, and then provide guidance based off the script that we gave them.
So the first contact when a patient calls in would likely not be a nurse. They take down some information.
Yes.
And this is a non-licensed.
Correct, it is a non-licensed person who has guidelines.
Using the guidelines, and then the nurse will call. Will that nurse have access to patient files? Is it integrated that way?
No, and if you want, I can share a document that talks about the ability to do triage without having access to a chart. I can.
No, I was just curious.
Not right now.
Okay.
And then they will fax us a report if, if this is something that is successful, and if we see a benefit, and if we know it can replace some of the nursing positions we've had open and haven't been able to fill for cost effective.
Yes.
Before our end positions open. So if it works, we can have them interface with sterner. So instead of faxing us a report, it would go into the chart, directly into the patient chart. They would still not use the chart for triage, because their principle is you can triage without having access to that patient chart.
Is this a twenty-four-hour service?
We are only doing this during our business hours. Our providers are the ones who will be taking call just through, through counseling, just like they always do. So right now, this is business hours Monday through Friday.
And any, any patient age, so long as they're.
Any patient ages, and it was really coming into FME. So we'll give them the choice of if you want to speak to a nurse, it will go to this organization, and then they've got dashboards that they report monthly. Do you want turnaround times? They look at how many people they prevented going to the ER. That's one of the questions they ask is, or would you have gone to the ER if you wouldn't have spoken with the nurse today? So we'll have some really good data and statistics to look at from them to see, is this a successful program?
Will you also be collecting data on the other side for people who do go to the ER, whether they are?
We can, we, we can look at that.
The key guy is that they should, and it's a really great save.
I can work, see with Dee Dee if we can set something up, if we know people are, have you tried to triage through your clinic? I think some of it is we need to get beyond the perception of we never answer the phone. And I think still a lot of people feel like that, because that historically is what it is. So that's a really good point to monitor.
Giving patients options when they call in about how they want to communicate, whether it's a voicemail or a triage or meeting and holding, or however, if a portal, I think that that is going to, you know, welcome an opportunity for a lot of people. I think that's great, exciting.
Any questions about the dashboard?
Somebody else wanted to say that the phone quality looks great.
I know, isn't that a beautiful sign? Michelle did a wonderful job of getting that sign up for her.
Any, any other questions, Stacy?
Just thank you for your efforts working on that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Stacy. So next up, we have medical staff. We have our chief of staff, Dr. Hoppy. Can you hear us all right, Dr. Hoppy?
Uh, yes, I can. Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Excellent, excellent. My, our report is on page thirty-four. And as you can see, we've had a pretty busy month credentialing and reviewing a lot of applications. We had, I think, a total of six for initial appointments, and seven were reappointment applications for credentialing. And they were approved by the Medical Executive Council, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Everybody's had a chance to review the, review these electronically online. Are there any questions for Dr. Hoppy or any concerns? All right, Bob and Terry, you guys ready to, when we get a motion, you guys ready to chime in, I assume? All right, do we have a motion to approve this, this list of providers for initial appointments and reappointments?
So moved.
Oh.
And it's all second, this is Terry.
All right, all right, Bob, Bob makes the initial motion, Terry seconds. Any further discussion? Right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 This is Terry saying aye.
All right, good. We got both of you, so that's all five of us. Anything else, Dr. Hoppy?
No, I just want to say, it's kind of refreshing. We have a pretty new medical executive council, and we're all learning. And so I want to thank you for being patient with us. It's a steep learning curve for everyone involved, so.
Well, I've been on the M E C for, for a little while. I know, I mean, John's been up for a little while, but he's, he's a little bit new. But to my, to my mind, I think it's working very well. I mean, it seems to be going very smoothly. And, and, you know, so I haven't noticed any kind of bumps or, or anything like that. So I think you're, you're doing a good job, as far as I can tell, Dr. Hoppy. John, you have any?
I agree, and I appreciate the willingness to learn and educate ourselves, and just to, you know, be the best committee that we can be for the best interest of the community and the hospital. So thank you for, for your dedication to that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hoppy. Right, next up is our chief medical officer, Dr. Mark.
My report starts on page thirty-five. I do have two more additional items. One is good news and one is important news. The good news is that, and Dr. Schmelzer stole our thunder, he made the announcement at five fifteen. Earlier today, he signed a contract with Emergency Associates of Yakima to provide medical direction in our emergency department to provide staffing around existing K V H employees. What I told our providers through this process is that their FTE would be respected, the number of shifts they pulled wouldn't be impacted. E A Y has been very willing to work with us, and Dr. Granai and Dr. Schmelzer formed a wonderful collaborative relationship. So I officially checked off my top one A priorities. And then the important news is just that earlier today, I became a grandfather.
I thought you looked a little different.
Yeah.
I'll take any questions.
Do you have any details you can share about Facy?
Seven pounds, fifteen ounces, a little before one thirty-five, twenty-one and a half inches long. Made in honor of his maternal great-grandfather and his paternal grandfather.
That's fantastic.
Mom and baby are doing well, and the kid has already been given a kind of miniature camp of a race uniform. Applause words for the scene.
Is this a first grandbaby?
It's, it, well, my daughter has a stepdaughter, but it's the first one that, that we've actually seen the baking process.
Okay.
Very exciting.
Can you or Dr. Hoppy talk about, I know you guys were about to put money around Chardis, and we had Dr. Hoppy, Dr. Thompson, and John, you went to some, and, and medical staff leadership. So if you would be asking enough about it.
Well, this is something that other organizations have done memorial, used to work with what was then called Freely, on about a two-year cadence. One of the things that Dr. Hoppy and I have discussed a lot is the desire to structure the staff position so that there is both a longitudinal component, so that you would be chief of staff elect, chief of staff, half-chief of staff, but also terminated, so that more of our providers are exposed to the workings of M E C, so that's less opaque. Where, where it has to be opaque, they know why. Chardis has a number of models for that. The one that we're looking at most with the greatest interest is having them come here and potentially hosting a workshop wherever we're all glad we're possible. Which has the advantage of only paying for travel for their faculty, not for everybody that we want to send. So we're exploring those, those options. They offer both a, a medical executive bootcamp and peer review bootcamp. We're looking at how we've done peer review in the past, and whether that's still appropriate for the twenty, twenty-first century. The peer review we do is based, is a hospital-centric model that was, hasn't changed for as long as I've been in practice. Where a case falls out, it's identified as peer review. Increasingly, there is, well, as an organization, we have to step back and realize, hey, ninety percent of our encounters are outpatient, they're not inpatient. And does the same process work in the outpatient setting? And two, because we are a system, we might have an issue that touches multiple aspects of the organization. Is there a way to make the, the case review process more patient-centered rather than provider or site-centered? Finally, there's now increasingly recognition of the value of ongoing professional performance evaluation, O P P E, which instead of being case-based, is kind of an ongoing, you and I are going to sit down and pull up three of your charts and three of my charts, and we're going to go through them and see what that looks like. What that looks like in general surgery may be different from what it looks like in family medicine, or what it looks like in hospital medicine. But that is kind of things that I'm hoping to work in Chardis.
I mentioned that part of improving peer view and that process is a program called N D Stat, which is a different module in what we currently use for the privileging and credentialing files that they're, they're working on implementing, which is really exciting. So that will help the process, too.
Yeah, and how we use that tool is going to be a function of what we learn.
So are we thinking then of bringing Chardis in to do this?
We're looking at it.
I know, it's a service they offer. We were waiting for some quotes last I talked, and it's still where we're at, and also I want to take it to the world collaborative and see if we can take advantage of some of the findings of scale. Yeah, I, I think too, to the board members that weren't at that conference, I think it's an opportunity to make K V H kind of the hub for centering Washington, you know, and, and I think it can bring us something beyond just the event itself as far as how we appear in the, you know, similar type entities around the state. So I'd encourage us to go the extra mile, see what we could put together, a little mini-conference like what we did for that one, have everyone come here.
Well, and I mentioned in my report that we had our receptor training event. By the time we've done that, we're probably going to do that on a spring, fall cadence. But there, we have, P N W U faculty from Tri-Cities attending the event. And we're looking at potentially regionalizing that. The biggest hiccup we had with this past one was we learned ten days before the event that the partner that was providing us with the meeting space had a conflict that they requested to share with us. So we had someone had to cap registration of what was in this room. And we've been having conversations with the Department of the Posting Organization about how we might deploy lots of matchups like that. They possibly consult their own internal calendars.
Any other questions for Chief Medical Officer?
On a different, different topic, you had said, I hope to announce the signing of the board meeting regarding anesthesia. I was hoping so too.
I'll discuss that more in a second.
Any other questions? Next up, our Chief Financial Officer, Scott Oliver. Scott?
Thank you. I have some next financial results to overwind. There are some pretty good things in here, and there's a few things that are not so good at all in all. We'll start on page forty. Let's see, there's stats on lines one and two. We have a low budget on these patients, admissions, and patient days. And some of this, we've had noticed, noticed that will shift to outpatient services. Some of the cases that Dr. Ali Lango does is very quick, and they, the patients are discharged within a day or day and a half on a total different need. And, and so that is similar, and we budgeted, we budgeted based on the trends that we had. So the overall revenue is there, it's just it's shifting from inpatient to outpatient. The, an encouraging thing that we saw this last month is I'd like to stay for the month. We had, we had, we need to be at four day, ninety-six hours or four days. And with the health emergency, we basically have a variance from that requirement, but, which we know we have to start meeting once the emergency ends. But we are three thousand, the stay at three point eight, so that was a positive trend, a positive event for the month. Case mix is, my line eight is, is high, so we're carrying, we're sick patients that are in the hospital. Case metrics reflects inpatient care. In the, you see in the lines eleven, twelve, and thirteen, inpatient cases were less than budget, but outpatient cases exceeded budgets, and GI cases exceeded. We're getting quite a, I think Dr. Neuer mentioned about thirty percent of the GI cases that he is doing around Yakima. I suspect that's the same for Dr. Petty and Dr. Smith also. ER continues to be slightly busy, and urgent care is a little slower. You can see with the digestive imaging on one seventeen, in excess of budget. And rehab, rehab visits are trending pretty close to budget, and you see, and you heard that from the rehab visits presentation also. And then with primary care clinic visits, right, budget for the month, we're a little ahead of budget year-to-date. And so when we turn over to the financial statements, you'll see the corresponding figures on the stats. So on page, page forty-three is our, our revenue for revenue expenses for the month. We were at low budget on inpatient revenue by seventy thousand. Exceeding budget on outpatient clinic revenue, and overall, we exceed budget by about two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. And this is, the way we spread the budget, this is, was a high-budget month for revenue. This is, so we took twenty million, seventy-five thousand dollars as the highest revenue month of the budget for the year. So this is, and just to kind of put in perspective, last month, in February, revenue was nineteen point seven million dollars. So this was, this was a busy month. In some of the troublesome areas, financial assistance, we were well in excess of budget by a hundred and thirty-two thousand. We've had some financial assistance adjustments related to vascular surgery. And so that, anyway, we are getting some, quite a few referrals at Yakima. Some of them that did not have medical or have insurance coverage. The families went through the, the financial assistance application process were very transparent and met the criteria. So we obviously provided the surgical care that they needed, and also the financial, financial assistance. In other deductions, we've had some, some adjustments related to medical necessity since time billing, a little bit of everything. But what we're facing, our working, our communicating, and G D also on some of these issues that have led to this. And so we're hopefully getting, we're seeing, I don't know if we've solved, resolved it yet, but we're seeing a better trend in April than we did for this in March.
Julie, the financial assistance, that's the thing you were talking about?
Yeah, and I really appreciate the example that Scott had provided. But one of the issues that hasn't changed since the pandemic is a concept called site neutral. So if you go to an ambulatory surgery center to have a vascular procedure, that ambulatory surgery center is going to, it's an all-in payment, the doc and the, it's just one bill, and it's based on an ambulatory surgery grouping of payments. And it will be less than what the hospital gets paid. If they, and so there's this, this friction that says, shouldn't we be paying the same thing regardless of where the patient has their surgery done, or should we pay more at the hospital? Well, we sit down with our electives and say, this is an example. That private practice in the community that sells said, you don't have insurance, you need to go somewhere else. And we wrote out a hundred and six thousand dollars, five six thousand dollars, in one patient that we assumed cared for because of that. And, and we do that, and we, we don't. And you heard it with rehab patients, that private practices are declining to care for medicated patients, let alone the uninsured patients. And, you know, and when we were talking to Alicia from Dr. Schreier's office, I said, I really encourage you to call an ambulatory surgery center at seven thirty on a Friday afternoon, because they're all alone. We have an emergency department staff. We, we work twenty-four seven. And we have a regulatory burden that far exceeds what an ambulatory surgery and a physician's office has. But this is a great example of why, you know, the clinics, and we can't exactly demonize a private practice for saying, you know, we're not going to take all the customers, if you can't pay the bill, we can't afford you people like some. But site neutral is a really, someone referred to as a bumper sticker concept, which it is, everybody should be paid the same, and it's a quick influence for hospitals.
So yeah, so just the, the big context there is that currently, there's different payments for the, for the different sorts of organizations. And there's a move to implement site neutrality. And if it did, that would be very bad because of the reason she talked about, the additional regulatory burden, and the fact that we have to take, you know, Medicare, Medicaid patients, but, but also patients who can't pay. You know, that's not a choice that we can make, but these private practices can. So there's all sorts of reasons why it shouldn't be site neutral, but there's a, a big push towards site neutrality.
Are you saying push at Washington State level or the national level?
National.
And, you know, what happens is sustainably, a, a primary care provider who wants to refer to a vascular practice will have their PSR call and say, we're trying to get this patient, will send us the patient information. Two days later, they get a quick notice back that they don't take that insurance, or they're not taking that insured patient. So they do that a couple times, and they, and at the end of the day, they go, oh, this patient's uninsured, we'll have to approve them in KVH. And so you become sort of the default provider for Medicaid and uninsured, so. I, the unfortunate part is, in talking to Dr. Schreier's staff, comes from the Schreier's staff, I didn't see a light bulb come on. I don't think we walked away feeling like, and she's important, she's on Earth Energy and Commerce, and on the
Help Center.
But I, I didn't feel like they went, oh, now we get it. So it's a little transparent.
Also, John, you have, John was asked about the impact of financial assistance with the, the new charity laws that kicked into effect last July. And on some of the charity applications that I'm starting to see, I have, we have, I just approved actually a, an E T surgery on a individual, that large family, no insurance, and baby, we did a free surgery. And, and so it's, we're, I'm seeing more of it.
Well, we collect statistics to send back to them. You know, they're, they're worried about where hospitals being financially, you know, it just feels like we need to complete that cycle. They're the ones that said, you got to treat them, here's all the new scales.
Well, well, the answer is yes. The, the, the charity reporting requirements back to Olympia have really increased. And I think it's more from a compliance perspective to make sure people are providing charities, so. But that data will be provided. And it may, it may surprise them. I think they're looking to come after hospitals for being non-compliant with the charity guidelines, but I think they will be surprised with some of the, the write-offs that we're seeing. And it's a direct impact of that, the legislation that happened here. So moving on down, I will say, we, some of the vascular care that was being referred to us was a a Metadamage Plan that is healthcare that is not offered there in Davis County. And we, we have accepted a few of that. We're starting to push back and say, no, you really need to go to, this is your, we have a network in place, and a contracted network. So with, so deductions were ahead of where we expected, and impacted some of the overall financial results that we have. And on the expenses, I'm feeling pretty good about where, where we are with temporary labor for the month. We are over budget by about twenty, almost thirty thousand dollars, four hundred and two thousand dollars, year-to-date. But a lot of those temporary labor assignments are in the, and I, and I think we're up and down this. These folks here are being very judicious about when they're entering contracts. Professional fees are in excess of budget, and that's related to contracting for ER providers, will be welcomes and other welcomes. So that's, that number's going to go up this year. And all in all, expenses, the supply currencies were volume-related. So we are over budget on supplies by three hundred and twenty-six thousand. So we ended up being able to post a offering income for the month of four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. We are behind the budget for the month and for the year. But it feels like some of the expense things that were by us and hurting us in prior months are getting into control. Down and non-operating, we were, we earned a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in interest on KVH's investment funds, and we had an unrealized gain of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand of hospitals' investments. So net income of nine hundred and ninety-three thousand. On the previous page, on page forty-two, the, we had, we dropped our days of cash receivable by six point five days. So that was it cost, it was
Pass the Company.
And, but we had the highest collection month that we've ever had, and this is almost twelve, twelve million, nine hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Just total patient receipts, and there is no provided leave money, no unusual things in that. It was all, it was all collections for work done by hospital and clinic staff. And then our, over on the cash and investments, they went up by five point four days. And then payer mix, you're seeing some of the, a little bit higher Medicaid for us percentage. Our overall mix of commercial is, is about the same. It's just smaller as a percentage of total. That self-pay is, that one point five five is a good number. And then I just, if we back over, back over to page forty-one and look at lines twenty-seven and twenty-eight, and look at annualized revenue, we're trending right now at two hundred and forty-eight million dollars gross revenue for the year. We have a, we're budgeted for two hundred and thirty-three, so we've got a, looking at about eleven percent of positive revenue variance. And I'll tell you that we will probably have a two million dollar positive variance for people who are, we're having a good revenue month for April. And we've got, all in all, there's some mixed things in this financials, but not bad. I just want, on page thirty-nine, we go through just our capital, but we've got for all the projects that we have listed, we spent about three hundred and two thousand dollars. The next time I report this, the next quarter, it's going to be a bigger number.
Anything to do with that?
We blame, there's so much events coming also.
The, which is about my report, which is
Any questions for Scott?
And then just
Other officials, why are a couple things blacked out? What does that mean? Like, he wants to reveal it later, kind of a big surprise moment?
Well, he's researching, so it may be that, that the amounts, you know, you can request different amounts, and he doesn't settle that, how much is going to?
I have no answer. And then we did have the, we just have the, the state audit report that we have, that is, it's a public document, which is the information. John was a part of the exit conference, and those
And I forward the copy to each of them, so they're aware for their record.
Any questions for Scott? Very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Michelle. Can you hear us all right?
I sure can. How are you guys doing tonight?
Good.
Awesome. So I just, first of all, I'll say, do you have any questions on my board report? I have a couple things to add afterwards, but do you have any questions on the board report?
I have none.
All right, great. So
Sounds like, sorry, Michelle, I guess John has a, has a question.
You know, you changed the new rating system. It's continued to give us useful information.
Absolutely. And so, we didn't, we didn't change anything. I want to be clear on that. We added a system. So we're, you know, we still have the Press Ganey that is very well established, which Mandy uses within quality and submits lots of results. What we added was an immediate customer feedback response system. So it's something where after someone comes in, sees a visit, has a provider visit, the next day, they'll get a text message asking them to rate their service, and that rating currently is going to Google. It could be spread out between a couple of different sites. So we did that on a trial basis, and we agreed to continue that. So basically, what it did is it allows the public to see feedback from patients, and we're actually soliciting that versus just waiting for somebody to decide to go on and give their feedback.
And that's immediate, that, you know, the text the next day is getting a high response rate?
Very much so. I didn't pull the radar dashboard up right now. We, when we first implemented, the company and I met every two weeks. I look at it every day. We were, I want to say, and this is where I'm trying to remember, I want to say we are seven percent above what they like to see for a response rate. So we're all very happy with the response rate. It's across the board on all of the clinics. what they like to see, um, for a response rate. So we're all very happy with the response rate. It's across the board, um, on all of the clinics. So they have active account managers that are watching in case something follows or we're noticing. And like I said, I go in on a weekly basis just to see how things are looking.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, um, so just a couple of things that I, I did want to highlight on that. Um, we have started doing additional videos for our providers. You'll recall a while back, we were doing provider videos that would talk about their patient care philosophy and just who they are as people. We have resumed that, but we're also doing dual purpose videos. Um, so we'll capture that video and then at the same time we'll, uh, capture the videos that we can use for recruiting efforts. So we did another nine providers yesterday or two days ago, I think. And we look forward to those coming out. What I really wanted to, um, mention to everybody is June third is a very, very busy day, depending on how much you paid attention to the board report. On June third, we have our board retreat and it goes from nine AM to three PM. It is also Keddes County Pride Day and we are supporters of that event. They'll be doing a parade downtown, um, that we have team members that'll be participating. We'll obviously be at the retreat. However, we did do, if you're familiar with our Team K V H shirts, um, if you guys would like one of those, we do have one specially designed for that event. Let me know by Wednesday, um, and we'll go ahead and get it ordered, even though you can't be at that event. That evening, there is an event, um, at Gallery One that we're looking for six people to go to. That starts at about six hundred, uh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at my local, six o'clock, eighteen hundred. The other thing going on, on June third is the foundation is doing, the K V H Foundation is doing their Breath of Air Gala. That is at five thirty at Sue Lombard. We are hoping to get sixteen people to go to that. However, that is an event, um, that K V H does not pay for. That's an individual, um, that has to pay for that. So what we were thinking is we can send these dates out to you in an email with Justin. And you can let us know if you're available and interested in anything. If you're interested at the foundation, for example, Justin will collect names, um, send them over to Laura at the foundation, who can then invoice you, but Justin can gather the names and get people at the same table and kind of be the, the middle person for that.
These are, we're looking to fill two tables of eight at the foundation and one table of six.
At Gallery One. And then the one other thing on the night before, on Friday, June second, there is a sponsor only event for Keddes County Pride. I do not have any details at this point. As soon as that comes out, I will let everyone know, but I just wanted to get that on your radar. So very, very, very busy day. Does that make sense to everybody?
It makes sense, Michelle. Would you mind just the stuff you might want us to attend? Do you think you could just put the dates in a, you know, and just the, the name of what it is? Just in one email and all of this, because I have seen these things separately. It would be nice to have it in one spot.
Absolutely. Uh, and the other thing that I, I will include for you, you can use it if you want, or, or you can, don't have to use it if you don't. Justin and I are tracking these, um, on a spreadsheet that you, you could look at. So if it's something, I'll, I'll send to make it very simple in the email, but like, if you want to go in and put your name on that, if you're a techie and say, I want to do this, you can do it that way too.
The problem is all of these events for June third. We need a June third spreadsheet.
But we already, uh, we are, we'll, we'll be done after we get, sometime in the afternoon. So. So we can do, you know, maybe some of the evening events, but yeah, whatever you sort of need us, um, or need or want us to attend if we can, it would be nice to have it in one spot.
Yes. And key, uh, and for everything that I just mentioned, that is, you know, if you want to bring your spouse, if you want to bring a friend, all of those things are available. Uh, so I will get that summary out to you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Of course. Uh, that is it for me. Um, as, as you mentioned, there's lots of things on the calendar. It is great to be back out into the community. Alicia's having a grand time.
I just want to say, we planned our.
What did you say, Julie?
Because we planned our board retreat first.
Yes, we did.
Uh, any other questions for Michelle? Thank you, Michelle. I feel like Jeff Yamada's been shortchanged here. Everybody else, I think, has talked.
I'll, I'll have mine, uh, next, next month. I didn't put it on the agenda, so one.
Okay. All right. That sounds all right. I'll, I'll have to wait. It's going to be hard, but I'll wait to hear. Okay, uh, education of board reports, uh, Julie and I talked a bit about, uh, about some of the stuff that we did at the A J Annual Meeting. That was, yes, we leave it at that earlier this week. And, uh, the three issues, well, let me just say, uh, that I thought it was an interesting con- conference. And I think there's some stuff that, that other people here might benefit from getting some of the information. I just have to sort of go through my notes, polish up a few things and then I'll send it out to everybody. And I also have a couple of PowerPoints, which may be of special interest to, uh, to Mandy especially, I think, and also Scott. The, the one was, the session, it was mostly directed to, to, uh, board members, but I think you might find it interesting. It's called Revitalize Your Board's Focus on Quality and Patient Safety. And there was a lot of information there, like the, the, you know, you, you did, I don't know, fifty slides in like ten minutes. So, uh, there's a lot of information that are really good information. So I'll be happy to send that your way. And then there was also a session called Pressure Points, The Financial Future of the Field and Impact on Patients. And, uh, so the, the, they shared the PowerPoints on that too, so I'll be happy to send that to you, Scott. And, and I know Julie that you were especially impressed by that segment. So, and then the three issues that we sort of brought up, uh, when talking to, uh, Congresswoman Schreier's staff member, was the site neutral payments, which we talked about already, price transparency, and we can talk about that later if you like. And then staffing issues, you know, there are some things that they can do around regulations about staff.
And three forty B.
Three, and three forty B, yes, three forty B. So those were the, the main things. I always get a lot out of this. I really enjoy seeing the kind of very big national picture of, of healthcare and how it kind of comes down to, to affect K V H. Joanna, can I add about the?
Again, the, the discussion points were exactly the same discussion points that were in twenty nineteen. I think that I was talking to some of the A J folks, um, uh, the day before the meeting started and the list of sort of anti-hospital bills that are being released is, that's just wrong. There's just a lot of, and, and somebody said, and I'm going to use this from now on, nothing dries quicker than tears of gratitude. So, so, you know, all of this, thank you for all the good, during the pandemic, is going to need to claw back some of that provider relief money, which is in the house budget. So it was really, uh, so transparency, you know, we had to go into Schreier's office saying, what you're hearing about transparency is not true. We are complying with transparency. We have issues with the insurance companies. I heard a lot of hospitals that are having serious problems with Medicare Advantage plans. And we have very low Medicare Advantage penetration in Keddes County.
Fortune.
Yeah, we are. And, and Medicare Advantage plans are just not paying. And I was talking to one hospital that is, has a standard ad in the newspaper showing how many millions of dollars Medicare Advantage hasn't paid yet. And that they're six months out, nine months out paying these bills. Um, so a lot of complaints around that, but the transparency thing being, um, us working with the insurance plans to, uh, do a, a good faith estimate of what the cost of something is going to be for a patient. It's only as good as the data that the insurance company provides to say how firm and correct their plan data is. We, three forty B was around the shift to bill to was what we've really tried to emphasize. There's some lawsuits going on there. And site neutrality. Again, that's the one I'm most worried about. That thing's out there forever. And, um, I'm just a little bit concerned that it's going to get traction. It, it will be definitely, so. Anyway, that's.
We made, we made our case, I suppose.
We did. We had the talking points and we went there. Um, this particular conference, um, uh, nobody, none of the, the electives were in until Tuesday night. They all flew in, um, on Tuesday night. So we were meeting with staff, which as you know, is probably more effective than meeting with, uh, electives themselves. Maybe never tell them.
Anyway, I, I will, uh, thank you, Julie. I, I'll be sending out that information later, uh, uh, probably this weekend. In case anyone's interested in getting some of, uh, some of the information that we got to come. The American Hospital Association Leadership Summit, this has in the past been, uh, been held in San Diego, but it's going to be held in Seattle this year, uh, July sixteenth to eighteenth. Early bird, uh, deadline is June second. So if you haven't contacted Justin about getting registered for this, please do so soon.
I, I do, yeah. So the current people that I have registered to go to the event, um, in Seattle is Julie, Matt, Terry, John, uh, Bonnie, Kelly Gooden, Dee Dee Utley, Katie Bellotti, and, uh, Brenda Heligas. So if there's anybody on your guys' teams that you want to, um, send to the event, I have a few more rooms, uh, reserved. I think I can accommodate another two or three. Uh, there's still rooms available and, um. What's that?
Amanda Scott.
Oh, Amanda Scott, that's right. Yes, because she's going to be back by that time. So, yeah, I can, we can accommodate more. They have plenty of rooms in, in somewhere that are available. Uh, we're planning on staying at the Hyatt. The, the days are a little different. Sixteenth to the eighteenth, um, is actually Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. So be kind of prepared for, for that. And we were talking earlier and, you know, it was one of the things that was kind of annoying for some of you that you're coming in on a, on a Saturday or a Sunday to start the conference. With which day are you starting the room? Saturday night or Sunday? It'd be, it'd be Saturday, yeah. Um, so that, that'll do it for, uh, the Seattle conference. Then I have some additional information about, um, the, the conference in June.
Hey, go ahead. Yep, this is the real hospital leadership.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, um, this one, there are no more rooms available at Campbell's and finding, um, surrounding, uh, rooms and stuff like that is, is turning into a struggle. But I have Julie, Matt, Michelle, Rhonda, Scott, Dee Dee, Erica, Mandy, Terry, John Ward, Bob Davis, and Dr. Martin, who are all currently registered with rooms to go. Those days are, are the twenty-sixth to the twenty-eighth for everybody but Julie, who will be there again on a, on a Sunday, which is the twenty-fifth. And, uh, on that one there, did you guys want to have dinner off-site for the, for the team? And, and if so, let me know kind of where, what you're thinking. There's a nice Italian restaurant, I believe. There's, there's really mention for us too, that I can make reservations for and stuff like that. It's just.
Should all just send out a taco truck.
There, that'd be a great idea. They probably have great tacos.
So we've kind of done like a group dinner before when we've been on Shalana's food, because we, when we do that again, we probably do reservations twice.
Well, I'm good with that. Uh, so, uh, Julie, I, I mean, you've been up there several times. If you want to pick where to go, I'm, I'm happy with that.
Seen your front?
Has anybody seen it gendered?
No. Oh, well.
There's, it's.
Is it a framework?
It's a very good framework. It's a great.
It says opening program.
Yeah.
Program, program.
Well, that's all right. Just go in, eat, drink and ready.
Uh, and then lastly, uh, just to kind of cover, you've talked about the, uh, one day retreat.
Yep.
Again, that's going to be in town. We're not traveling anywhere. It's Canyon Ranch, uh, Canyon River Ranch out, uh, in the canyon. If people want to arrive in between eight-thirty and nine, there is going to be a light breakfast. I'm trying to get some more healthy options besides just donuts and coffee, um, just let me know. So, uh, yeah, I, there's, there's to be strategic planning committee things happening, um, that is getting scheduled with those teams for the, for the different strategy, um, portions. Um, if there's anything I can do to help us with scheduling any of that, let me know. Um, and, and also, um, towards the end of May, I'm going to reach out to everybody and find out, you know, if there are any specific things you guys need me to bring, let me know and I will gather them all and bring them all to us.
The only, the only thing I'd add to that is for those of you who are sort of heading up these different strategies, if there's anything you need the board member to do in advance or anything, just let us know. Uh, otherwise we'll just show up ready to, to sort of think along with you and talk with you. But if there's anything you want us to do, uh, just reach out to us.
And the meetings that are happening in advance of that, are those all Zoom, not hybrids or not in person?
I think it could be whatever's clever. I, I can, I can put as a link on any meeting and there's plenty of spaces for us to meet in person if we want to.
Financial sustainability, all these are in that. Who else has met with their teams?
We're meeting ninth of teen.
We've met once a meeting, yeah.
That are scheduled with Terry.
I think we scheduled in person, but if we need Zoom, we'll add it.
Oh, no, okay. Um, I only saw Zoom. I might have misread it. And so I just wouldn't want to accidentally show up on a computer when everybody else is.
Any questions? Okay, no old business, no new business. Julie, how long do we need in executive session?
We need forty-five minutes.
Forty-five minutes. All right, let's, um, let's just take, uh, let's take an eight-minute break, yeah, eight o'clock, and then we'll plan to reconvene at eight forty-five.
And I got Scott and Dr. Martin. It is same Erica.
Yes.
And, and Terry, uh, Terry, Bob, how will we get him?
Um, so I can stop recording and leave the meeting open, uh, but, and, or I can send them really quickly a, a news.
It's up to you, whatever's good.
Yeah, I'll send a news.
Did you hear that, Bob and Terry?
Check your email for a new, uh, Zoom invitation, all right? Uh, Bob and Terry.
Oh, is that what, okay, I'll get a new Zoom invocation.
Yes. Yeah. Sounds good.
All right, great. I'll be glad to Zoom.
Thank you all for coming. Uh, so we'll reconvene at eight if you're not going to be here. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.